Welcome, everybody. Sorry for the slight delay. We're here for a regular business meeting of the Laramie City Council. It is May 15th, 2018 at 6:31 PM. The first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please rise and join me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, can you do roll call, please?
Gabriel?
Here.
Hanson?
Here.
McKinney?
Here.
Pelikas?
Here.
Shumway?
Here.
Schuster?
Here.
Stoner?
Here.
Pierce?
Here.
Somerville?
Here.
That's nine, present and zero absent, your honor.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda, we have a proclamation and a presentation. So first, we're gonna read a proclamation about Kids to Parks Day. So whereas, "May 19th, 2018 is the eighth Kids to Parks Day organized and launched by the National Park Trust, held annually on the third Saturday of May. And whereas, Kids to Parks Day empowers kids and encourages families to get outdoors and visit America's parks. And whereas, it is important to introduce a new generation to our nation's parks. And whereas, we should encourage children to lead a more active lifestyle to combat the issues of childhood obesity, diabetes, hypertension, and hypercholesteremia. And whereas, Kids to Parks Day is open to all children and adults across the country to encourage a large and diverse group of participants. And whereas, Kids to Parks Day will broaden kids' -- children's appreciation for nature and outdoors. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Andy Somerville, Mayor of Laramie, do hereby proclaim May 19th, 2018 as Kids to Parks Day and urge residents of the city of Laramie to make time May 19th, 2018 to take children in their lives to a neighborhood, state, or national park. And for our part, we will do the best we can to control the weather to make it a nice day." Director Fieser.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, it's a pleasure to be here today. One of the big things about Kids to Park Day and my big reason that I love parks so much is they're socially equitable. Anybody, no matter how rich you are, what ethnicity you are, anything, you're able to use a city park, whether it's to lounge in the grass, throw a ball around, play on a playground, swing on a swing, just enjoy nature. So that's really the best part. Laramie is blessed with beautiful city parks that are in great shape, maintained by our Parks crews, and we're happy to be part of this.
Well, thank you very much for keeping our parks beautiful. Klaus?
Just wanted to also mention that you, together with the Disabilities Commission, is working on a handicapped playground possibility in one of the parks for kids that are handicapped to use and enjoy the parks. And I think that's an important issue, which is kind of forward, I hope. Thank you.
Thank you to you and your Parks crew for keeping the parks beautiful.
Absolutely.
Thanks. So our next item is a presentation on Keith Wardlaw's retirement. And before I turn it over to Todd, I have to share a quick story about Keith. So as a young council member, I'd been on only a couple of months. The first time I learned about mosquitoes, Keith came to City Council and made this amazing presentation, and every inch of it lives in my memory. He came and explained to us about all the chemicals he used and all of that, but I think when he walked up with the traps and the tray of the mosquitoes and dropped it on the dais, that was a moment that will forever live in infamy. I think he got full funding that year. And we learned a lot about vector mosquitoes, so I appreciate that. So Todd, floor is yours.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. You know, this is a presentation that I make with great joy for Keith, a little bit of sadness for myself, and a lot of jealousy for myself because I'm looking forward to my retirement as well.
We all are.
To start off, you know, it's a blessing to have got to spend the past couple of years with Keith, and I tell you, he's really changed my life, my outlook on city employees, and really crafted who I want to be when I reach the future and as I move through my career. So we'll go through this, and I'll give you a little insight to Keith. Hopefully, you can bear with me. We'll take just a couple, three or four or five minutes, then I'll allow Keith to come up and say anything he would like to. I kind of based my presentation on what I call Keith's Big Three, and I think I got him in order correctly from what I know of Keith is, you know, the most important thing to Keith first and foremost is his family. The next thing that he lets take over his life is his work, and then the last thing that he really enjoys is his fun. And we'll show you a little bit about Keith as we go through this. Keith and Mary Kay Wardlaw here in this picture, great hair. We're glad to have them. But Mary Kay's a very instrumental woman in Keith's life and very important to Keith. He talks highly of her, they talk great about each other, and what a fantastic married couple to emulate yourself after. Keith's children, we've got Kevin and Kendra, and that's Kevin and Kendra back when they were babies, I believe. This is what they looked like not too long ago on a snowmobile trip. There's Kevin, Kendra, Keith, and Mary Kay. One thing that Keith told me as we were going through and talking about different things as we do is that his best friend is his son Kevin, and his son Kevin has moved to Alaska, and in his retirement, they hope to be able to visit their -- his best friend Kevin and his wife and little Charlie Scott Wardlaw that joined us on May 14th, 2018.
Wow.
Just a day or so ago. The other most important part of Keith's life, if you visit with him, he talks a lot about cadence, and cadence is here with us. Can you say hello, Cadence? But I really, I hope Keith would agree and Mary Kay would agree that family is Keith's most important piece of his life. The next part was Keith's work. Twenty-seven years and five months when he retires with us, and we do have a retirement party scheduled on Thursday from 2:30 to 4:30 at the Recreation Center. We hope anybody can make it. It has been advertised in the Boomerang, but a bug thugs' life, as we call Keith's career. Keith's career didn't start as a mosquito. He was actually hired in as a park maintenance worker, and he did lots of things. Here you can see he's on Leboni Lake quite a while ago. This is a picture out of the Boomerang, and it's taken by our own -- or by the county's Tim Chestnut, so.
When it was blue.
When it was blue, yeah. There, they were working on an aerator to make sure it was getting going ready for the summer. Keith has also been a forestry supervisor and worked in our trees. Here's Keith trimming trees from a high ranger. This is Keith and, I can't remember, Mike Zook. They're preparing the ice skating at Leboni Lake. And there's a lot of times Keith has been in mosquito for a long time, but he's been on that lake probably as much as he's been in mosquito control. Here's Keith putting up danger keep off of ice. Great hat and great overalls. You still have those, Keith?
Still on the walker.
And this is a picture of Keith working on our IPM program. In August 6th, 1996, Mary Kay provided this. Keith was provided appreciation for cost-saving methods to the IPM program. And this is pretty consistent for Keith. He's a jack-of-all-trades, gets everything done, and is just a great, great employee, great friend, and a great coworker. A few, quite a few years ago, about seventeen years ago? Seventeen years ago, we had a chance to take over mosquito control, and I put this cartoon on there just because I like cartoons, I think they're funny, but you should try the elbow. I've heard the ankle is really good, too. You know, we all hate those pesky mosquitoes. But when they were doing the hiring, there was a party or something going on, and Keith and Mary Kay showed up in these outfits. Quite, I believe it was before he was even hired as the mosquito control. So you can tell he was ready to be in charge of mosquito control as he went through. Keith has done over that time, he has turned our mosquito control program into a top-notch program. He has got aerial application, adult fogging, larval applications. It's just an incredible program. I got the pleasure to go to a couple of conferences with Keith, one that was hosted in Laramie, one that was hosted in Loveland, the West Central Vector and Mosquito Control Association. And, you know, when Keith speaks, everybody listens. Really, the room goes quiet, and they look for his professionalism and his leadership all across the region, and it's really impressive to listen to that as you go through it. Keith also developed a successful, safe IPM program for the city of Laramie that is successful, keeps our parks green, keeps the weeds low, and does everything we need it to do, and we have very little damage, injury, or anything, and it's a very successful program, especially in an area that's protected by aquifer. Keith also dealt with the floods. We know that the mosquito control shop is down there and has had his issues. There's a picture Keith working on. I'm not sure where he's pushing that water to, but he's pushing it around. This was the air-propelled pump fiasco of 2017, and Keith sent out an email. He said, "If anybody knows where I can get one of these, let me know, I'll go and pick it up," because it did prevent us from providing some treatment for about four days before the new pump got here. Here's Keith and Tyler putting out biochar socks that we recently put in Leboni Lake. Those are great US Coast Guard-approved life preservers that we've had since Keith came and played with us. This just happened recently. One of the things that Keith has implemented is we do a training with University of Wyoming, the city of Laramie, and the Wyoming Mosquito Management Association, where they bring people in from all over the state and provide training. That is actually occurring today and tomorrow. So he's been in training all day, and here he is. One of the things, if you spend any time around Keith, as Andy indicated, you know, when he speaks about mosquito control and safety and training, he really loves training and educating people, and it's a fantastic, just a fantastic part of what Keith brings to the table. Here they are out in the field discussing, probably dipping in larval, searching for larvae, and looking at mosquito issues. Then we talk about Keith's fun, and Keith's very active. He's an avid snowmobiler, and here's pictures of snowmobile trips, fishing trips to the tropics where he's the only mosquito control supervisor that I know that has picked up a mosquito-borne illness. If I say it correctly, chicken gunya on this trip. There's a picture enjoying some of their pursuits, and you can see Keith back there flexing his muscle in the back. One of his favorite things that he really talks about a lot is Ruby, and that's his jeeping and going through different things, enjoying his four-wheeling. These are, this is a picture we actually used on one of our program guides that Keith took, and he titled it "Snow Monsters," and that's on one of their snowmobile trips, and you can see how the snow is impacting the trees. Keith's an avid hunter. Again, back to snowmobiling, camping, and, you know, most all of the pictures that I saw were hard to find of just Keith. There are always of Keith and his friends and his family, so you know he's well-involved in all of that. I'm not sure why you drag a canoe upriver and don't go with it, with the water, but that's what Keith does. Actually, Keith, I will admit, Mary Kay forced me to use this. Over the past twenty-seven years and five months, Keith's been a fantastic employee to the city of Laramie. I put a quote in there, but, you know, he really is the employee that I look to be like. Fantastic that I got to work with him, not necessarily supervise him, because much like Andy, he educated me and managed me through a lot of mosquito control problems. He's also developed a fantastic future mosquito control supervisor in Tyler Shevling, and he's just impacted everybody that he's touched. And if you could help me and give Keith a round of applause, and if he feels like coming up.
I'm not sure what to say after that. It's a little too much, but I would like to say thank you for your support over the years that I've been here. We have had some difficulties, we've had some great seasons, and we've certainly made an impact in how mosquito control is done across the Laramie Basin. We've had the opportunity to work with our partners all over Albany County. We've brought some new technology and a lot of hard work to what we do to make our citizens more disease-free and a little bit less bothered by the mosquitoes over the course of a summer. So I'm sorry for being a little bit emotional, but it's been a work of a lot of years, a lot of love, and a lot of tears as well to get to where we are today. So thank you again for your patience with me and your trust, and thank you to my crew and also to my supervisors who've given me a lot of latitude to work, to move forward, and to do the things that we needed to do to make the program better. And that has been a joy for me to be able to do that with your help, so. Thanks to all of you. Thank you.
We thank you to you and your family. All right, so let's, we don't have any public hearings, public announcements. City manager?
No announcements this evening.
Okay. Well, I have one in the tradition of our 150th anniversary. We're gonna talk about water and water pipes for here just a second. I'm not, I believe this is a late 1800s ordinance, again, and so it says that "It shall be unlawful for any person or persons, company or corporation owning or having control of any water pipe or hydrant in the city of Laramie to use those for the purpose of irrigating lawns, gardens, or trees." So no using your city water to water your lawn. It also goes on to establish exact times that you can use water for specific purposes. And then it also says, "It shall be unlawful to allow water to run in any water closet in the city of Laramie except when such closet is being used."
Okay. That's good.
Don't let the toilet run, apparently. It's illegal. And then also, "When an alarm of fire is sounded, the use of water from pipes is forbidden until danger of the fire is over." So no drinks of water until the fire is put out.
That's smart. Pressure up.
Keep the pressure up, right? We've come a long way since having to forbid people from drinking water while we're putting out fires. All right, item number five, disclosures by city council members. Any disclosures this evening? Okay. All right. Vice Mayor, there's no changes to the agenda.
Right. So I move that the agenda be set as submitted.
Second.
Second by Councilor Shumway. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, that motion carries. Vice Mayor?
Okay, I move that the consent agenda be approved and that each specific action on the consent agenda be approved as indicated.
Second.
Second by Councilor Hanson. City Clerk, can you do roll call, please?
Gabriel?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Pelikas?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Stoner?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
That's nine, yeses and zero nos, your honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. Onto the regular agenda. Item number 10, Councilor Stoner.
Yes. I move that city council approve the addition of an enclosed outdoor patio alcohol-serving area along the south side of the building to Speed Goat Laramie LLC Bar and Grill, license number BG6.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second by the Vice Mayor. City Clerk?
Yes, council. So Speed Goat is wanting to add an area outside of their building. They're going through the permitting that is required by engineering, but for them to be able to serve alcohol in that outside seating area, first, it must be fenced in, and second, it must be approved by you. So that is what you're doing tonight. You're just determining whether or not Speed Goat is allowed to serve alcohol in the fenced-in area that will be reviewed and approved by engineering and fire and all the folks that have to do that here. So it's just a simple, would you like them to be allowed to have the alcohol better than on?
Any questions for the City Clerk? Okay, thank you. And do we have any representatives from the applicant here tonight? No, don't think so. Okay, all right. Are there any public comments on this item? Okay. Discussion by council. Councilor Schuster?
I'll start it. I know that one other place in town here has done it, and I, when we say fence, the fence doesn't probably have to be any taller than like 30 inches or something like that. For liability reasons, we even have a fence on the historical depot around the historic train that if you've crossed the fence, you have violated, even if the fence is only 12 inches tall. I know that the fence is the big thing. I'm hoping that there's adequate room. I know there's planters and all kinds of signs in that area, so I hope there's adequate room coming up because we get really busy down there during the summertime. We're gonna have Jubilee Days, we're gonna have some 150th anniversaries, we have our Friday afternoons where we have our farmer's markets, so that area of town gets extremely busy, so I hope that there's adequate room for strollers, I hate to say wheelchairs, or anything else that needs to get by that area.
City Engineer, did you want to address the process for the approval?
It's required.
And the review? That would be wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Shep.
Your honorable member, or honorable mayor members, Councilor, Councilor Schuster, there is adequate room. We are keeping about six feet clearance in all areas throughout there and room for any of the tables they're putting up and everything, so it meets all ADA guidelines and requirements for this permit, so.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion or other questions by city council? All right, City Clerk, can you do a roll call, please?
Gabriel?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Pelikas?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Stoner?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
That's nine, yeses and zero nos, your honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. Item number 11, Councilor Pelikas.
Thank you. I have a question before I introduce it. Do I have to put the, put it on the floor first and then move to postpone?
Yes.
Okay. I would move that Resolution 2018-19 certifying a planning commission resolution approving a request to amend the major street plan of the 2007 Laramie Comprehensive Plan.
Second.
Second by the Vice Mayor. Councilor Pelikas.
Thank you. I would, now I would move to postpone city resolution 2018-19 to July 17th, 2018.
Second.
Second by the Vice Mayor. Any public comment on the postponement motion for this item? And for the public's information, the postponement is because we have not met with why not yet on this item. Any discussion by council on the postponement? City Clerk, can you do roll call on the postponement, please?
Gabriel?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Pelikas?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Stoner?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
That's nine, yeses and zero nos, your honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. Onto the regular agenda. Item number 10, Councilor Stoner.
Yes. I move that city council approve the addition of an enclosed outdoor patio alcohol-serving area along the south side of the building to Speed Goat Laramie LLC Bar and Grill, license number BG6.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second by the Vice Mayor. City Clerk?
Yes, council. So Speed Goat is wanting to add an area outside of their building. They're going through the permitting that is required by engineering, but for them to be able to serve alcohol in that outside seating area, first, it must be fenced in, and second, it must be approved by you. So that is what you're doing tonight. You're just determining whether or not Speed Goat is allowed to serve alcohol in the fenced-in area that will be reviewed and approved by engineering and fire and all the folks that have to do that here. So it's just a simple, would you like them to be allowed to have the alcohol better than on?
Any questions for the City Clerk? Okay, thank you. And do we have any representatives from the applicant here tonight? No, don't think so. Okay, all right. Are there any public comments on this item? Okay. Discussion by council. Councilor Schuster?
I'll start it. I know that one other place in town here has done it, and I, when we say fence, the fence doesn't probably have to be any taller than like 30 inches or something like that. For liability reasons, we even have a fence on the historical depot around the historic train that if you've crossed the fence, you have violated, even if the fence is only 12 inches tall. I know that the fence is the big thing. I'm hoping that there's adequate room. I know there's planters and all kinds of signs in that area, so I hope there's adequate room coming up because we get really busy down there during the summertime. We're gonna have Jubilee Days, we're gonna have some 150th anniversaries, we have our Friday afternoons where we have our farmer's markets, so that area of town gets extremely busy, so I hope that there's adequate room for strollers, I hate to say wheelchairs, or anything else that needs to get by that area.
City Engineer, did you want to address the process for the approval?
It's required.
And the review? That would be wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Shep.
Your honorable member, or honorable mayor members, Councilor, Councilor Schuster, there is adequate room. We are keeping about six feet clearance in all areas throughout there and room for any of the tables they're putting up and everything, so it meets all ADA guidelines and requirements for this permit, so.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion or other questions by city council? All right, City Clerk, can you do a roll call, please?
Gabriel?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Pelikas?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Stoner?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
That's nine, yeses and zero nos, your honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. Item number 11, Councilor Pelikas.
Thank you. I have a question before I introduce it. Do I have to put the, put it on the floor first and then move to postpone?
Yes.
Okay. I would move that Resolution 2018-19 certifying a planning commission resolution approving a request to amend the major street plan of the 2007 Laramie Comprehensive Plan.
Second.
Second by the Vice Mayor. Councilor Pelikas.
Thank you. I would, now I would move to postpone city resolution 2018-19 to July 17th, 2018.
Second.
Second by the Vice Mayor. Any public comment on the postponement motion for this item? And for the public's information, the postponement is because we have not met with why not yet on this item. Any discussion by council on the postponement? City Clerk, can you do roll call on the postponement, please?
Gabriel?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Pelikas?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Stoner?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
That's nine, yeses and zero nos, your honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. Onto item number 12, Councilor McKinney.
I move to approve Resolution Number 2018-38 setting the right-of-way encroachment business permit fee schedule authorized the mayor and city clerk to sign.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by the Vice Mayor. City Engineer?
Your honorable mayor members at council, so the item before you tonight is a resolution to just establish a fee permit for businesses at $10 a square foot. We aren't changing any of the city ordinances. Those are found in Section 12. All those are staying the same. Nothing's really changing in regard to the, how the right-of-way permits are processed or anything like that. This item before you is just to establish a fee. This item would be used for the site plan that you had just recently approved for Speed Goat.
We have seen a lot of businesses asking about this and wanting to move forward with this.
Councilor McKinney.
So, you've gone downtown, talked to the, to some of or part of the owners downtown, and they, they're wanting you to set a fee schedule so that they can put tables and chairs out there?
Your Honorable Mayor, Councilman McKinney, we haven't actually talked to the businesses yet. Part of this will be to, after this is approved, we will go down and start working with the businesses down there. Most of the businesses that have talked to us have not established any of the tables or anything like that this time.
So, what's... How is the fee set up in conjunction with the people that are putting a fenced-in area outside as compared to what the mayor does with a table? So, you have a fee schedule of $10, they take up 36 square feet, they pay $360, how much is Speedgoat gonna pay?
They'll pay for their fenced-in area of the table, or the fenced-in area of the...
Just the square footage of the fenced-in area?
That's correct.
You're...
That is correct.
That doesn't seem fair.
We're just on questions right now.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Councilor Polikas and then Vice Mayor.
Did I, did I also read somewhere there's a minimum of seven foot has to be maintained for the sidewalk for safety purposes?
Your Honorable Mayor, Councilor Polikas, I believe that was, it's six feet.
Six feet.
Yeah. And it kind of depends on the areas of where those are at. Those are to meet ADA and fire requirements is what those are based on. So, those have always been established. Like I said, those are the guidelines we're already following in the permitting process. This is just for that fee. So, nothing's changing in those guidelines.
Can I follow up a little bit? That six-foot figure, was that randomly pulled out of the air, or is that some sort of a standard they have for this type of activity happening in other places? Or, what, how, what criteria was used to establish that six-foot?
Your Honorable Mayor, Councilor Polikas, that's based on ADA requirements and also fire standards. We also did research what other communities have done in the past, and that is what those requirements are based on.
And I assume that six-foot is a clear six-foot? In other words, if you've got trashcans or light poles and so forth and so on?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
It's a clear six-foot.
Vice Mayor.
So, just so I understand it, it would be whatever the fenced-in area square footage is?
If you're serving alcohol for that, yes, that's how. But if it's, if you're just putting a table, it would just be for the table and the surrounding chairs. It'd be based on the drawing that the applicant would submit.
Okay, so only if they serve alcohol does it have to be fenced in?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Councilor Schuster.
I'm just gonna pick on a company because I know there's probably different...
I'm gonna say, please don't pick on any particular businesses.
If there's an overhang and it's on basically their property and has a fence, they won't be charged, correct? Because there's a place that probably used to be a gas station that had a drive-through underneath, and they're not encroaching on the sidewalk even though they have an outdoor venue.
Your Honorable Mayor, Councilor Schuster, I believe if it's, the overhangs and stuff are all governed by building codes. So, this permit wouldn't get into any of those kind of requirements. An overhang would not apply to this permit area.
Okay, I'll discuss it with you off-site, so I'm not gonna have to worry about this then.
Thank you, Councilor Schuster. Councilor Hanson.
Thank you, Anna. I thought I'd read it somewhere, but now I can't find it. What about the markets, the summer markets that we have that include the streets? Are they then being charged this fee as well?
Your Honorable Mayor, Councilor Hanson, that's all handled through special event permits.
That's a special event.
So, that wouldn't apply to this type of, the permit. For, those are, those are handled in a different way.
And, and I notice here that it does say something about that it could, material could be put on the street too?
So, that is actually, so this, this right-of-way permit, there's a whole different aspect of it. And that is construction debris, so any kind of rock, stuff like that. But we have a temporary permit. Those fees have already been established, and that's, that's handled through that type of a...
I'm, I'm reading the background here.
Yeah.
So, that's the, that's not involving this thing at all.
This is just for the business, the license for the businesses like a cafe.
Thank you, thank you, Your Honor.
Other questions for the City Engineer? Thank you very much, Mr. Japp. All right, I can open up two comments from the public on this item. If you could introduce yourself for the record, and we have a five-minute time limit. And then if you could sign the sheet. Yep, thank you very much.
Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, I am here as the Chairperson of the Laramie Main Street Alliance to speak to you on their behalf, as well as a business owner downtown. So, kind of a dual purpose. Well, I understand that the city is looking for ways to increase revenue streams. The $10 a square foot fee is pretty high, in our opinion, for businesses downtown. The current amount of rent for space downtown is only $7 a square foot. So, we would be paying more than we're paying for inside space to utilize the city's outside space is a big thing. And the other thing is, I know that the city is trying to raise funds, and we want to increase sales tax revenue in Laramie. And so, we feel like this is kind of a double tax on businesses. You want them to increase their sales tax revenue, and so they're finding ways to do that by adding outdoor seating, adding benches outside for people to wait in line while they're downtown, that type of a thing. And so, you're kind of double taxing them and making them not want to increase their sales taxes by adding this extra fee that's fairly high. And in relation to some other things that I've seen from other places where it's $50 to $250 a year, some places are gonna be paying between $900 and $2,500 a year to have that seating. And some of them may just pull that, and that's gonna decrease their sales tax. That's Main Street's stance on that.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from the public? Please come up.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council. I'm John Garen. I'm the owner of Coal Creek Coffee and Coal Creek Tap, along with my wife, Jody. We put in two, what I understand to be the first patio on city property about two years ago. Several of you were here at that time. Our patio space, and we do serve alcohol on that, is about 245 square feet. So, we're looking at an annual fee of $2,450 for this, if we go with this. My annual liquor license on the restaurant side is $1,750. My annual microbrewery permit on the brewery side is $500. Just numbers for reference. Contrary to what the engineer stated, there is a fee schedule in place. We, we paid the fee when we got our permit initially. It's $250 and it's a flat thing, and we were told at the time, this is it. I was shocked at that, that it was that inexpensive. So, I'm not opposed to a fee schedule, an annual fee schedule, per se, it makes sense. But this seems exorbitant. And then I'll end with just, just some food for thought. Does this affect, how does this affect flowerpots? How does this affect, affect just a bench outside? A lot of my, you know, business companions in the downtown have things just to make it a nicer downtown and a nicer community that way. And the way the current permit, or the, or the, what's being proposed is written, it doesn't, it doesn't differentiate anything. It just says, here's, here's the new rate, and here's, here's how it's gonna go. I think that's all I had. You want to add anything?
I think that they're trying to make an assumption about the fact that I might want to speak. I, just a couple of things. We've been talking about a bike rack, like a high-capacity bike rack out in front of Coal Creek that would take up a parking space. That is in the right-of-way, technically it's in the street. My presumption is that if we're including flowerpots, bike racks, benches, et cetera, that's gonna be an annual fee that would be borne by the owner of the bike rack. Now, is that the city? So, I don't know if Main Street turns the bike racks over to the city at that point, or if Main Street's expected to cover that cost. But it is a concern for me. As I read the fee structure, the, the square foot cost would make it so that that $250, I'm presuming that that's a design review fee or a plan review fee. And I could be wrong, but my presumption is you have that fee, and then annually you're gonna have the other fee. So, you know, when you're thinking about it, okay, if we're leaving in place the $250 per bike rack, for instance, to make sure that they're clearing all of the space around it, and then you're gonna have a smaller fee, but on, on annual basis, but at the magnitude that we're talking about, you know, it makes the improvements that we've been making to the downtown, I think, less likely to continue. I know a number of businesses who have like a bench outside, and if they have to go through a process where annually they have to submit an application to have their bench outside and pay a fee for something that they were just trying to offer as a seating place for the public, you know, that, that seems hard to imagine. The other thought we've had, some of us who've kicked this around, is maybe you only require this of things that generate business income, which maybe that, that's a good idea. But then, then you have to ask yourself, does a bench generate business income? Because you have a bench outside your business where people can relax and after they, you know, partake of whatever, whatever you have in your store? Or is that not accurate? Because tables and chairs sometimes get by, used by others, you know, who aren't necessarily in your business. Anyway, it's a concern for me because I, I didn't hear about this until Main Street brought it forward. I certainly would like to have some conversations as somebody with an interest in it. And, you know, it seems like we should be able to come up with some kind of a reasonable fee schedule that appreciates that the city has some interest in that right-of-way, and maybe we do owe something for that. But maybe we do it at a level that is not discouraging businesses to continue to do this and instead encourages it. So, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I just want, I just want to close with, I would just respectfully ask that you table this for the evening and get some input from the downtown business owners and with what's, what's reasonable? What, because this, this just coming out of nowhere and saying that we're gonna pass a fee schedule on part of our community with no, no conversation about it just seems unreasonable. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who'd like to make a public comment on this item tonight? Going once, twice? All right, so, up, come on up. Just made it.
Hello, everybody. My name is Chrissy Love, and I was, I'm talking in front of you to tell you about, you know, how alcohol is really bad for us? Why is everybody trying to sell it? And why are they contributing it to it? Okay, like, if we're having a, a street, I guess some kind of a, you know, festival or something of serving alcohol, that, you know, don't you think it's really bad for us? I mean, it doesn't matter who, who they are, you know?
Ma'am, I'm gonna actually, so we have to, I have to take public comment specifically on this topic, which is just the fee, fee schedule for encroachment on public right-of-ways.
Okay.
So, there is a time later for public comment on anything.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna close public comment on this item and come back to council. Discussion, thoughts? City Manager.
Mayor, if the council would like, I can answer some of the questions from the public.
Sure.
And bring some clarity perhaps to the discussion.
That'd be great.
So, Council, I've put to the top of your inboxes just a few moments ago, an email that I shared with you yesterday, as well as with Laramie Main Street Chairperson and Director. I did ask that, inasmuch as they were able to distribute this information prior to tonight to dispel some of the concerns you've heard about that they would do that, I realized there was a short period of time to circulate that information. So, I appreciate being given the opportunity to address these questions. What you're being asked to deal with tonight is purely a fee for for-profit activity that you will permit as basically permanent installations in the publicly-owned sidewalks throughout the community. Those are established public rights-of-way, constructed by the taxpayers, maintained by the taxpayers, and the taxpayers are liable for those amenities. The reason I make that point is only to tell you that what's being proposed to you is completely customary and normal throughout this country in thousands and thousands of cities. So, first I want to say the City Engineer hasn't brought something wacky. This is pretty normal in terms of city business. Second, I want to mention that the ordinance, as it pertains to permitting encroachments in the right-of-way, does allow for all kinds of installations. The specific question that was asked of me, and which I provided now again to you guys and into, and to Main Street answers to, was whether what I call community interest activities would be assessed this fee. And if you look at the resolution that you're passing, it refers specifically in the preamble to customers, i.e. the exchange of goods for services in the right-of-way. And then it declares that the fee is assessed only when an encroachment permit is issued annually to a business for for-profit activity in the taxpayer's space, basically. It's a rent of sorts, if you will. It also allows us, by permitting it, to ensure that we've met federal standards for ADA compliance and adequate egress and ingress by the public that is not only adequate, but is safe as well. And that's why the City Engineer's Office administers this program and has been obliged to do so by municipal code for, for decades, frankly. As to what I call these community interest items that aren't business activities for profit, benches for public seating, pots for beautification, bike racks. I can tell you when the bike rack program was put in place jointly by Laramie Main Street and the city of Laramie years ago, Paul Harrison and I, Todd Fuser's predecessor, made the administrative decision at that time not to burden Main Street with the permitting of those encroachments. And we just handled that quietly and administratively behind the scenes, like we have done for years in our partnership with Main Street. So, in my opinion, the resolution you're passing tonight does not apply to community interest activities, beautification, bike racks, or benches where the public are generally welcome to sit. Now, if someone wants to put up a bench and it says only customers of X business can sit here, then that would probably cause them to fall into that for-profit category. But that's, I think, hopefully if it puts to rest any concern that the city would somehow try to make money by assessing a fee to things that are in the community interest. We never have, nor do we intend to, and nor with the resolution before you allow staff to do that.
Any questions for the City Manager? Vice Mayor?
I've got one. In deciding the fenced-in area between alcohol and, and not having alcohol, I guess from a, not that I know, but I would think from a, a safety perspective in terms of people moving about and in terms of actually enjoying your lunch, for example, without alcohol, from my perspective, it would be nice to have fenced-in non-alcohol areas, I guess. To me, that would be safer and far more enjoyable to sit out and have your lunch outside without the potential of somebody, like, as they're walking by bumping into you. And, and it would be nice to be in kind of a fenced-in area outside, from my perspective. So, I'm wondering why we're not doing all fences, even though they're not like major fences. But I'm just wondering why we're not fencing in all functions, I guess.
Honorable Mayor and Councilmember Pierce, I'm gonna refer this to the clerk, but I believe that the issue of fencing alcohol is not within the control of this council. It's dictated by the state.
So... City Clerk.
So, that's true. So, if somebody wants to serve alcohol outside, it must be fenced in. There is, my understanding of this, there's nothing that precludes a non-alcohol establishment from fencing in an area and making a, a permit, a request to have a fenced-in seating area? So, the differentiation is that if they want to have alcohol outside, they must have a fence. If they don't want to have alcohol outside, they may have a fence.
Okay. And we're not, and we're not...
We're not keeping anybody from having a fence either.
But we're not requesting or requiring any fences for non-alcohol activities?
Correct.
Okay, that just seems unfortunate from my perspective, because I think it would be a much more enjoyable lunch if people weren't potentially bumping into you as they walk by. Just saying.
Councilor Polikas?
I just, I just have a question. It's been established to, to charge $10 a square foot. Was any research, was any research done as to what the, what the average leasing per square foot is within our retail area of, of the downtown?
Mayor and Councilmember Polikas, if acceptable, let the City Engineer address that. But yes, they did look into that. I want to reiterate, excuse me, as the City Engineer comes up, if he's got data with him to share, that, that $10 benchmark is sort of an average, but it is not necessarily a recommendation of council, or, excuse me, of staff to you. We are following direction to make sure that our fee schedules are current and that they are relatively customary to other communities, and so that's where the research came from. But that $10 fee is completely your call. That's full-on a public policy decision for you. So, Eric can give you some comparators here, but if you feel that $10, as you've heard from the business community, is too much, I mean, we, we don't have a stake in what that rate will be.
I guess what I'm really interested in knowing, and these, I know these statistics are out there. Anybody buying and selling leasing, the first thing that their, their advisor's gonna tell them is, what's the average square foot for retail space in Laramie? And then they're gonna say, well, this property is more than the average, or this property's less than the average, and this is the reasons why and so forth. So, what I'm interested in is, have you done research and what is the average square foot?
Your Honorable Mayor.
For leasing.
Yeah, Councilor Polikas. So, what we did is we kind of, we went off the counters assessors, web page, where they have the assessed value of the property and the square footage. And, you know, an undeveloped area was about $13. We, the highest we found was 190. The lowest we found was 92 in the downtown area. So, that is what we based our research off of, and that is a square foot.
But I'm interested in the leasing rate for downtown space.
I, I think if, can I clarify the question? If the question is, did we assess what commercial property leases for in Laramie?
Correct.
No.
That's not it. We compared ourselves to what other municipalities, and, and the email I sent you will give you some data from Cody, from, from Fort Collins, et cetera. I mean, when you go to those communities and you enjoy this outdoor seating, they have this in place. So, we compared ourselves to other municipal governments.
Thank you for, thank you.
Councilor Hanson and then Councilor Stoner.
Thank you, Your Honor. Maybe I'm missing a document here, but the resolution right now seems awfully vague in general. And what I think was brought up by the City Manager makes absolute sense to me, but it is in no way conveyed neither to us at this point, except from what we just heard, nor to the, the public downtown, or the business owners downtown. I would suggest that we postpone this thing and include all the specifics that were just mentioned in the document, in the resolution. Then I think I, I can see it passing very well. But right now, all it says that the city hereby adopts and approves the right-of-way encroachment, et cetera. And on top, it says something about growing customers downtown, being supportive of the victualers and shopkeepers, and creating new revenue for the city. And this seems very general to me. I'd like to see something specific that the, the business owners can look at and say, aha, this involves it here. For example, the City Manager mentioned that the benches are not included, they are city property, and other items of this nature, you know, that are not considered. So, I'd like to see this just worked up in a more specific way, and I would suggest a postponement. I'm not doing that until we finish more discussion.
Finished discussion. Thank you very much. Councilor Stoner?
Thanks, Mayor. I just, I believe my question should be directed at the City Manager.
Please.
I'm just trying to gain a clarification about the current process under our code. So, if I had a business that had a few tables, some chairs, and two flowerpots outside, and I was establishing that for the first time, I would have to file those things with the Planning Department as it is now? But there just isn't a fee associated with that?
Right.
And that would be a one-time thing? Is that correct?
City Manager?
Mayor and Council, I've just emailed to you a link to the city website, to Councilmember Hanson's question. You are effectively wanting to reprogram a program that already exists. And so, I sent you the link to the existing program. We have been permitting right-of-way obstructions, and bear in mind, this ordinance applies not just to your downtown, you have interest from your downtown, but it applies citywide to any enclosure that is installed in the public's right-of-way. So, you have a link, you can see the process, there's even a flow chart, to what we have been doing for many, many decades. The, so, wanting to write it into the resolution is fine, but in some regard, you're stating what we're already doing. And frankly, I don't know what the city attorney would say, but if we want to design a program by ordinance, like many other municipalities do, there are some really great sample ordinances out there. Cody's is sitting on my desk, it's 20 pages long. We can, by ordinance, put these requirements in place, or we can allow city engineering or we can allow city engineering to determine what fits best in every situation, given the location of bike racks and light poles and other things to assure egress and such. Counselor Stoner, to your question, if I were a business and I wanted to put a table outside where my customers could sit and chairs for them, they would need to follow the process that I just sent you the application link for, and then also the actual process for applying. We see that Coal Creek's here. They've been through this process, so they could probably talk to you about it in a firsthand way. The flowerpots, however, would also be required to be permitted, but no fee. If you adopt this resolution, no fee would be assessed to the flowerpots as a beautification activity because they're not specific to the for-profit activity of the business. But the table and chairs would be assessed, whatever fee you determine this evening, that square footage. Does that answer your question?
It does, thank you.
Counselor Gabriel?
Thank you, mayor. I was, appreciated the email from the city manager last night. It was very clear to me. Although, we have some people in the audience that we heard from Mr. Garen and from Laramie Main Street that certainly I have some questions about. And I agree with counselor Hanson that we need to postpone this because some of these fees are just way out of whack in my mind for these businesses. I mean, they discourage what we want to really do for downtown, I think. And I think encourage is the word we want to use. And so, anyway, that's my comment.
Anybody else not made comments for the first time?
I think I already did for the first time.
So, I, I'll add some very brief comments. I've had some conversations with Main Street and the businesses downtown. And although I am supportive of the fee schedule for the for-profit stuff, I think for the kind of clarity that we need for our businesses, I think that this resolution could use some wordsmithing to it, per se. I'm also not sure that we don't need to go in and take a look at the actual ordinance that's on the books that permits this, to see where we need to make those changes, whether it's in the ordinance or the resolution. I think, and I would certainly welcome a motion to postpone this for a month to allow for kind of a rewording for for-profit business activities only, as well as a review and conversations with Main Street. Counselor Polikas?
Actually, I have some comments before that comes on.
Please, please.
When I process thing, when I process this, this item, I think there's a huge, huge difference between bike racks and flowerpots and a chair to sit on and so forth and so on. When you're dealing with for-profit, when you're dealing with a business that wants to make money, which is all we all want to do, we want to make as much profit as we can, you know, you have to pay for space. It's not, if the sidewalks belong to our community, then it's our responsibility that if somebody's going to use those sidewalks for profit, I think it's our responsibility to make sure that, that profit goes to the citizens, if you will, for the benefit of the citizens. Okay? So, from a philosophical standpoint, I think it, just like the building, the building that the business is in, they either bought that building or they're paying a lease on it to make a profit so that they can pay sales taxes and help our community out. But the bottom line is, is if they're not, if they're not making a profit, they're not going to do it. And our sidewalks are our citizens' property, and it's up to us to make sure that the citizens are getting a fair return for the use of that sidewalk by private industry. Now, having said that, what I'm uncomfortable with is, I think you have, to figure a price of the value of that, I think you have to look at what the average lease price is within our community. And I know they have that. I know real it is, if I go down and say, "I'm interested in buying a business property in Laramie, Wyoming," the first thing they're going to tell me, they're going to tell me the price or the range, but they're also going to tell me what I can make per square foot on that price on a lease because I've been through this. And they may say, "The high is, the high is $12 or $15 a square foot, and the low is $7 a square foot." But without that information, I don't think we can really start at assessing what a fair value is. We may want to go the same square-footage price as the inside, but we may want to do something that's three-quarters of the inside price of the average square foot. My point is that I think it's fair, and I think we need to move forward in something along this line. But without, I don't think I have the information tonight to be able to judge whether $10 a square foot is a reasonable amount or whether it's unreasonable for Laramie, Wyoming. I think it is reasonable for other places, knowing what I know about commercial square-footage prices. Okay? Thank you.
Counselor Schuster?
A little bit on what he said. I know we can't change this and make it an ordinance where we'd have three readings, but I think we ought to have a work session if we delay this so that people can come in and talk about it. And location, location, location's going to be the biggest concern of this because I know of people in the higher part of town are paying over $30 a square foot. I know people that are on a back or, I don't want to say back street, but off the main drags, off of Grand Avenue, off of Third Street, that are paying as little as $5.40 a square foot, that I've heard. So, I mean, how do we assess this? Are we going to say, "Well, this one's on Grant, so it's got to be this amount. This one's on Second Street, and this one's on Third Street." I mean, it's, to come up with this figure, it's going to be really tough. Is it in historical downtown? Is it not in historical downtown? You've got so many different things that are going to control this. It's going to be unbelievable. So, I think if we delay this, I think there should be a work session before we bring it back where people can vent at us.
Vice Mayor?
So, I'm not at all opposed to this. And I don't want to get too far in the weeds in determining if it's on Grant or Third. But I will tell you that every restaurant, bar restaurant, should know how much profit or how much they need to make per chair, right? When they're, when they're running their operation, they need to know, "I need to turn this table over. This chair is going to profit me X. And if I can fit in another table and another chair, I have the potential to make more dollars, assuming that I can fit that all within the, in the fire code." So, the reality is, when, when a table goes outside, it's a, basically, it becomes a for-profit. They're, they're going to make money from that particular situation. So, I think the $10, $7, $12, whatever it happens to be, is totally reasonable on a square-footage basis. I don't, like I said, I don't think we need to get too far in the weeds. But if they divide the 2,400 or the 1,700 or whatever it works out to be by the number of people that walk into the place, they might have to actually raise their price by, you know, one cent per every 10 people or something. I mean, it's going to be pretty minuscule in the, in the big scheme of things. So, like I said, I just don't want to make a big old mountain. I'd have, I'd have really nothing.
Any other comments from council? Counselor Hanson?
Thank you, your honor. I feel I haven't done my due diligence because I really was not aware that most of that has been established in ordinance. But neither are the people who run businesses downtown probably are aware of what's established and what's not established. The way this reads, I have really no objection to establishing a fee. But the way this reads, it reads like a standalone document, and therefore, it's not specific enough to really take care of the matter. The city manager intimated that it might be good to include it in the ordinance that we have and establish it there as a change in the ordinance so that it's a little clearer to the people to follow this instead of a standalone resolution here, which I think it's kind of hard to follow because you have to go to someplace else to see what's been established already. So, I move to postpone it for-
To the June 19th, 2018 meeting?
Yes, and have a public hearing in the meantime and find a way to include this in the established ordinance already so that it's clearer to everybody who has to follow the ordinance as to what needs to be done here.
Counselor Hanson, is that a motion to postpone till the June 19th, 2018 meeting?
Correct, that's my motion.
And have a public hearing?
Yes.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by counsel McKinney. Or is there any public comment on the postponement motion? City manager?
Mayor, I would suggest, in addition to your postponement motion, that if you are going to postpone, that you also add and impose a moratorium on staff to permit any business license encroachments in the right-of-way. If you're not sure what you want to do with this, that's fine. If we need more conversation, but in the meantime, you have an ordinance on the books that we must honor. And if establishing a fee is important, then putting a moratorium on permitting those business encroachments would allow you the time to make those decisions and not put staff in the position of receiving applications that they're obliged by ordinance to act on, but without direction of council and knowing how to do so appropriately.
I'd be glad to include that in my motion.
Does the second agree on a moratorium on permitting? Counselor McKinney?
So, is that going to, that's going to make it to where nobody can get in?
Yeah, right. So, like Speed Goat that just got approved can't.
Can't approve, right. But we already have a fee schedule set in the application that I've got here that she just sent me. Why can't we just use this fee schedule that's there?
Hold on, hold on. Before we, I need to know if the second will agree to the addition of the moratorium. If you do not agree, then just say no.
No, I do not agree. I think we should stick with the fee schedule that's already in place.
So, if we want to add that to the motion, then I would need, I think we should do it through an amendment since we don't have that. So, discussion, or, I'm sorry, before we go to do discussion on that?
We're, so there's, we're waiting on a second for the motion.
We have a second for the original motion. We don't have a second for the addition.
Not the addition. But because we have a fee schedule set in place if somebody applies.
No, you don't. I'm sorry.
It's, it says right here on the application.
Mayor, that is not applicable. I'm sorry, that is what is in place, but it is not applicable to permanent business establishments in the right-of-way. If that were applicable, we wouldn't be bringing you this resolution tonight.
This is temporary or permanent?
Yes, but it is not for business permits for obstruction.
Correct.
And that's what we're talking about tonight, is allowing businesses to extend their business areas out into the public rights ways, an extension of their business area.
And there is no current fee schedule?
That does not have any fee established right now.
Yeah.
Okay, I think that it would be helpful to get some clarification. So, the fee that is with the permit right now, city manager, please correct me if I'm wrong, but the fees that are listed, I think it's $35 for a temporary, $250 for a permanent, that is a permit review fee. That is not actually paying for the encroachment of the right-of-way. Is that correct?
Yes, I think so.
Okay. So, then, that's how we have been doing it in the past. That's how one of our businesses downtown has the seating area and the encroachment. So, okay. And if we, if we do not do a moratorium, that will just continue until we, we'll just keep doing that. That way, they'll pay a permit fee for the, they'll play a, pay a review fee.
Correct.
And that'll be it.
But no fee for the licensing of the space in the right-of-way.
As we've done, that's what we've done to date.
Correct.
Okay. Is everybody clear on that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we have a motion and a second for the postponement. Public comment on this item, specifically to the postponement?
Do I need to introduce myself again?
Yes, please.
Okay, John Garen, 803 Fremont. I just want to clarify, I just, I hope we're not, I think I understand you correctly, city manager, but we're not penalizing Speed Goat here in their ability to proceed with their- Will they be able to proceed with their patio if we, if we postpone this?
Yes.
Okay, that's what the moratorium means.
So, hold on, hold on.
The moratorium means no, they wouldn't.
Just a second. Mr. Garen, I need you to address your comments to the council.
I beg your pardon.
Thank you. And we will get your questions answered.
Okay.
Let us know what your questions are.
All right.
Get them answered. So, you want to know if we're going to, if Speed Goat would be penalized, the application that we just approved, if they would be able to go forward?
I'm just, as a fellow businessperson, I'm sitting back here and I'm going, okay, I got mine two years ago. And now, because, for whatever reason, the city has decided to change the fee schedule and change the permit application, a fellow businessperson of mine is not going to be allowed to do this in a timely manner as we're approaching the summer season? Does that make, does that, does that make my question clear?
It does. And we'll get it. We'll get it answered here in just a second. Is there anything else you want to add to the postponement?
Yes. Through the conversation, one thing that has, I've thought about this, and I hadn't said it earlier. When we're talking about the rates that we'll come to at some point, which I'm fine with, I think it's important that we consider that when you talk about rental fees, my patio doesn't get used 12 months a year, four and a half at best. I just thought I'd throw that up, food for thought.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, before we answer his question, is there any other public comment on the postponement? Okay. City manager, can you confirm? So, as it sits right now with the motion we have, which is just a postponement of this item, a business that was approved for an alcohol-serving area would be able to file their permit, would pay their design review fee, but not an encroachment fee, and would be able to put their patio up?
As long as engineering approves it.
As long as the engineering approves it?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
All right. So, as it sits right now, they could continue. All right, so we've closed public comment. Discussion on the postponement from council. Counselor Polikas?
I have one clarification.
Please.
That I need to understand. So, it's business as usual, as we've been doing things. But we're also in the process of perhaps assessing a fee, a yearly fee, for new applications, and it would also include existing businesses that are already using the right-of-way. Is, is that correct?
That is my understanding. City manager, is that understanding correct?
In other words, there's no grandfathering going on. So, in essence, be put on notice that you may be, you may be, even though it's not costing you anything now, there's a very, there's a possibility it will cost you in the near future.
Secretary of State or Summerville? Counselor Polikas, I believe that is true.
Okay.
Okay.
Because the proposal is an annual encroachment.
Right.
Permit for business. So, it would be renewed annually, yes.
If you, if you go that approach.
And I'll throw one more quick comment in there. I, I agree with Mr. Garen and his assessment. I hadn't thought about it, but he's absolutely right. As part of the fee, we have to, we have to assess the fact that these areas cannot be used in the wintertime.
Other discussion on the postponement. Counselor Stoner?
Thank you, mayor. I, too, have a clarifying scenario. So, if a new business was applying for the encroachment permit, and we didn't make a decision, we postponed the conversation, they went through the current process, and they opened their patio for the summer, but then we have a workshop and come up with a policy, that business, and every business, will be assessed next year. Is that right?
Correct.
That is correct.
Yes. And if I could clarify, mayor?
Please.
Not so much next year, but from the time you implement the resolution forward. Whenever you would do that.
Okay. Perfect. Counselor Schuster?
Two things. I know that you talked about this. I saw that we canceled an alcohol-related work session. I would really like to see this when we talk about it in a work session instead of just five minutes before a meeting. So, I would wish that we could change his wording on that, but I know that will be-
June 12th, yeah.
Yeah, on June 12th, that would work out just before that, too. So, I'd like to see that. And I don't know how to state this. If, if the moratorium is voted on later and comes into place, will Speed Goat still be able to put their thing out?
So, we don't have a moratorium on the floor, so we can't talk about that right now. It's not there. If it gets on the floor, then we'll talk about it. Counselor Schuster, to your work session request, the code of conduct requires that those are requested at the end of a regular business meeting. So, remind us, request it, get a second, we'll put it on the list. We'll see if we can make it work.
Okay.
Before June 19th. Any other discussion on the postponement? City clerk, can you do a roll call on the postponement, please?
Gabriel?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Polikas?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Stoner?
Yes.
Pierce?
No.
Summerville?
Yes.
That is eight yeses and one no, your honor.
That motion carries. So, that is postponed till June 19th, and the conversation will continue through those weeks. So, with that, I know it's about 20 to 8, but we're going to take a break. Come back in about 10 minutes, and we'll continue on with the agenda.
Your honor, it was clear that when we postponed it, that we don't want the same thing to come back. We want to have an augmented-
I think that was clear.
That was-
Thank you.
That was clear.
Yeah.
We're on a break for 10 minutes. We are on item number 13. Counselor Shumway?
Thank you, your honor. I move to approve the cooperative agreement with the Wyoming Department of Transportation for participation in the Bill Nye Avenue and Corthell Road project and authorize the mayor and city- mayor and city clerk to sign.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by the vice mayor. Director Smith? Floor is yours.
Your Honor, the mayor, members of council. I think most of you are familiar with what we call the Bill Nye Project. It actually includes Bill Nye from Boulder to Fifteenth, as well as Corthell Road from Whitman to the future Bill Nye. This is a standard co-op agreement. You've approved it, approved these as a council many times over the last few years. So anytime we work cooperatively with YDOT, we enter into these agreements. Just a little bit more about the project. Bill Nye between Boulder and Nineteenth Street will be a four-lane roadway with a median and center turn lanes, similar to the section of roadway that was recently completed between Vista and Boulder. Bill Nye between Nineteenth and Fifteenth will be a two-lane section with eight-foot parking lanes on the sides. There'll probably be some type of surface treatment upgrading that roadway, but Bill Nye essentially between Nineteenth and Fifteenth will remain as it is today. And then Corthell Road will be a two-lane roadway with shoulders and sidewalks on both sides. This cooperative agreement addresses the design and construction work associated with the project. So YDOT's right, you may recall a few weeks ago, you confirmed or approved a reconnaissance report of YDOT that was associated with, with this project. This is the next phase where we'll begin surveying and right-of-way acquisition and so on and so forth, leading up to design and ultimately construction for this project. As is typical with these co-op agreements, we have a nine-point-five-one percent match, and that amounts to four-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand, one-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars. And you'll notice in the budget, that number, the number that's in the budget is, is less than that, it's around three-sixty-two. It's in the next biennial budget, so we'll need to address that in the future. The other obligation associated with this are future construction costs known or identified as overmatch, and that's close to two million dollars. So that's a future expenditure that we'll have to discuss at some point in the future as well. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Counselor Shumway?
For clarification, half of this future Bill Nye is in the county. And so is the design, construction, and all costs gonna be shared with the portion that's the city portion, and then the county pay on their portion, or are we gonna have to annex, or what's the, what's the plan?
Your Honor, the mayor, council member Shumway, we, we did have that discussion at the USAC meeting, as you recall, and I don't have the answer to that question. If it's the council's pleasure, we will certainly pursue an agreement with the county. It seemed to me that their indication was they had no interest in participating in such an agreement. However, we could certainly approach them if that's your desire. As you mentioned, the other option would be to annex that, so it's wholly within the city.
Well, just to follow up, my understanding, the House Bill fourteen indicates that we don't have primary rights to plan or to develop areas within the county. Now, I know there's a date when, when, when all of that planning becomes, you know, the primary responsibility of the county, but at this time, are we permitted to go ahead with planning, construction, et cetera, outside the city limits? Or YDOT didn't seem to know the answer to that, nor do we. And so do we have to postpone this, or do we go ahead with what we're planning? What, what's the, what, what, what would we do that would be not contrary to the agreement that came to us through House Bill fourteen?
Your Honor, the mayor, council member Shumway, that's a question that's better answered by someone above my pay grade. And I, I would say the only, only response I, I have with that is this is a project that is promoted by the Urban Systems Advisory Committee, of which the county is a member, so.
City Manager, did you have any thoughts on that, before I go to the next council member?
Well, Mayor, council, candidly, it was considered whether this agreement needed to be a three-party agreement. We have, I, I would echo what the director said. If the council wishes to pursue a conversation with the county, we certainly can do that, either by postponing this item and pursuing a three-party agreement, or by approving this item and pursuing a separate agreement. I think the pros and cons of that are if we postpone this agreement and pursue a conversation with the county about adding them as a third party with us and YDOT, we will not be able to initiate the surveying for this project. And if we don't initiate the service, the surveying in the next two to three weeks, my understanding from speaking with the district engineer, is that we'll lose a year on this project. That being said, the completion of Bill Nye is right now in twenty-two or three, Earl? I can't remember.
I don't recall, it's.
Or not the completion, the construction, excuse me.
Yes, it's, it's in that time frame.
So, yeah, I think there's two ways to do it. One is try to create a third-party agreement out of this, which will almost certainly delay the surveying work, and it won't occur till next year. That pushes the project out one year. I'm not sure how significant that is or is not. It would give us one more year to find funding for the project, right? The city's portion, so there is USAC money, but the city does have a portion that we have to contribute. Frankly, I think the project is important enough to the community that I would prioritize it as a recommendation to you. Whether you would agree with that, I don't know. So I'm not sure, time is an issue on the funding, but I think that your question is a well-placed question, and we're in sort of a gray space right now with the change in state law, and there is some uncertainty as to how best to proceed forward on projects that happen in city and, you know, within the county, but close to and adjacent to the city. So there is some gray space and uncertainty. The statute that you're referring to, Counselor Shumway, will take effect January first.
Right.
Counselor Hanson, you were next.
Just for information, there was, of course, pardon me, inclusion of a new interstate access. Is that of Corthell or of, of what? That's not included.
That's not included.
Okay. Where, where is that new interchange planned?
Not right now.
What, what street, Forty?
Director Smith? Hold, hold on, please. Director Smith?
Mayor Somerville and Councilmember Hanson, I believe that interchange is at what would be the Thirtieth Street alignment, and that's, that's well down the road, because those are multimillion-dollar projects, and I don't think that anyone has the funding to complete that project.
Because I heard Corthell, and I thought, I know where Corthell goes eventually, but it's not going to, all the way to the interstate.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions, forward Director Smith? Okay, thank you. Actually, Director Smith, I apologize, I have one question for you. Given the city manager's comments about surveying, I know this agreement is extensive and goes through construction, bid letting, construction engineering, the whole nine yards. Is there a way that we could approve a shorter agreement just to complete the surveying this year while we pursue an agreement with the county for a cost share and operating authorization to be out of the county?
Your Honor, I, I think as Councilmember Shumway pointed out, we're, we're still dealing with parts of the project that are within the city and some that are without. So I, I don't think you're gonna get around that issue by approving a portion of it. I, I think if you want to approve the agreement, then we can proceed forward. If, if you would prefer that we negotiate with the county first, then I think we need to delay the entire project.
So I guess, to the question, because if we approve this agreement, we're essentially saying that the city will cover a hundred percent of this to YDOT, the one-point-nine million of overmatch plus the four-twenty-eight, right? So my, my question was, can we just do enough to complete the survey work and tell YDOT, we agree to pay for the survey work in whole while we work out the rest of the cost share with the county, so that we're not telling YDOT that we're on the hook for the entire thing until we've had that conversation with the county?
Well, I, I think this agreement isn't structured that way. So if that's your pleasure, then I could go back to YDOT and ask that we prepare some form of agreement that would, that would accomplish that, and then bring that back to you.
Okay, thank you. Is there any comment from the public on this item? All right, discussion from council on this item. Counselor Shumway?
I, this is a very, very important project. It's gonna move students from the high school and take a lot of pressure off there. I want to have this moved forward, but also, we have, have caused some ire with the county when we've moved forward without having everything agreeable to, to, to all parties. I, I'm afraid right now, as hard as this is to delay it a year, I'm gonna have to vote no because of, of the mandates that we've received on what our, what our permitted ability is to plan within the county. Yeah, I agree.
Counselor Polikas?
All right. As Counselor Shumway stated, this is a very, very important road within our community. The, it's, it was designated by USAC as our most important road that we put in out of any kind of future roads we can think about doing. Okay? Because in essence, what it's gonna do is it's gonna take traffic from the high school and from the turner tract, and it's gonna give it an expressway to other parts of town. It would be wonderful if we had an interchange so that we could, people could use the interstate like they do now to go from West Laramie into South Laramie by way of the interstate. We don't have that. There's other streets that are on that USAC list. This is number one. Secondly, this starts in the city and finishes in the city. In essence, it's a peninsula that's still county land, probably because there was no desire by the landowners of that land to develop it at that time or this time. Therefore, there's no reason to be in the city from their perspective. But the bottom line is, it starts in the city and it ends in the city, and the people that are gonna be using it are the people that are, are, are part of the city of Laramie. It has no benefit to the county as they perceive it, and that's not gonna change. The county will a hundred percent support us on this, but if you think you're gonna get any money from the county to support this project, I don't think it's gonna happen because it's just not one of their important priorities at this point in time. So I would encourage you, I know there's some, there's some hard feelings, I know there's some, some issues as far as what has happened with the House bill, but I think you gotta look at the big picture, and it's, it's so important that we get this road moving forward in a reasonable amount of time, and we don't turn it into another Harney Street project that takes centuries to get built, that should have been built ten years ago. Thank you.
Counselor Schuster?
I completely agree with Counselor Polikas. This is not, the county doesn't have an issue with this crossing in to outside the city boundaries. Any problems we have have developed from something else. This street here is absolutely fine with them. Do we need to do several things? Yes, we need Thirtieth to come out and join to it. We need, Fifteenth is already there, but this is not an issue with them. They're not upset about this or anything else, but they're not gonna financially help us with it either. This starts in the city, it ends in the city. Is it gonna be for county kids that attend the high school? Yes, by all means it's going to be, but it's not their number one priority like it is ours. We need to keep this going.
So I, I'll add a couple of thoughts real quick. Counselor Hanson?
Just a question, do we have it in writing that the county is agreed to this?
They have, they have agreed to the, to the extension, in the preliminary at USAC.
At USAC.
The way that, that Bill Nye is.
That's their priority, and I'm, I'm sorry, but they've agreed to that.
Okay.
So my, my thoughts are very similar to Counselor Shumway's. I understand this is an important project, but I struggle wholeheartedly with hearing that this is not a priority of the county. Every person in the city of Laramie is a county resident. This, if this is the most important priority for the city in terms of road building, it ought to be the most important priority of the county in terms of road building. It is in the county. I think we need to be very clear that, you know, that, what has happened with the legislature and our county commissioners, they have asked us to respect and not be involved in the jurisdictional boundaries. I, for one, am not comfortable approving a project that the city is gonna pay for that goes out into the county without a written resolution of support from the county, which we do not have. We have a single county member voting on a USAC committee right now. That tells, that does not tell me that the county supports this. So before we go operate, I think that they need to approve in a resolution that they support the project, and they, I also believe they need to financially support the project. It is in the county. We've been, we've had drummed into our heads the last year that we have to separate the county and the city, that we have to operate separately. So I'm happy to have the city pay for the portions that are in the city, but if it's in the county, they need to pay for it and they need to be a partner at the table. I am unwilling to approve this agreement. I would be more than happy to approve the surveying piece of it to move the project forward. I think it is very critical for the high school and a lot of other reasons to get this project moving forward, but we've been given very clear guidelines by the legislature and our county commissioners on what they expect, and I think that we need to adhere to those. So until we have a written agreement from the county with a cost share and a resolution of support for the project, I don't, I can't support this project, and I would have a hard time believing that we would tie up money in hopes that the county commissioners would come to the table and talk to us. I think we need to talk to them first before we approve the project. Counselor Stoner?
Thanks, Mayor. Is it possible, I don't know who this is directed to, but the option that you spoke about with moving the, the survey forward and then trying to get an agreement in correspondence with that, is it possible that if we went that route, that we wouldn't be delayed by a year?
Mayor? Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Stoner, as Director Smith indicated, we can take that question to YDOT. They would have to write us a different agreement, because this one is, is beginning with surveying and on through the, the conclusion of the project. But if they were willing to write a surveying agreement alone, as a standalone, then the answer would be yes, we could avoid delay of the project. I will share with you that I think that is possible but unlikely, because the federal funds, what this agreement does is it commits funds to the entirety of the project. And in my experience in working with USAC, the rules are that the local needs to pledge their full share, sort of upfront, so that it's clear that the project can proceed clear and free from surveying to ribbon-cutting, but we're happy to ask the question.
Okay, that's helpful. Counselor Gabriel?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just curious, how much discussion has gone on with the county concerning this? I, I am still not clear on that.
I'm not either.
None?
No, we've had a discussion.
I mean, has Bill Gorman been involved, county engineer? Has he brought anything to the commissioners?
Counselor Shumway, could you clarify which commissioner sits on the USAC committee and what conversations they've had?
Tim Chestnut's on the committee, and we had a meeting, January? Was it January day?
I think it's.
Anyway, we have the minutes. And, and in that discussion, when it came up, you know, the, the question went before YDOT, went before the committee, and we discussed this. The comment was from the county, this is not going to be a, a, a funding priority for us, we're gonna put our money elsewhere, so we won't be participating financially. And that's kind of where we left that with the thought, we've, we've gotta look to the future on how we can move this forward and, and get it, get it completed, because like Counselor Polikas said, this is our number one priority. This is critical to moving the high school students and the people from Turner Track and elsewhere around the city without, you know, clogging up our arterials. This is, this is very critical, but it's been clouded by regulations, and so that's why I agree with the mayor. I don't wanna step on any toes, and I don't wanna move forward thinking the city has the right to impose our will. And I don't wanna move forward thinking the city has the right to impose our will upon the county. Because that's, I don't, that's not my, my thoughts. My thoughts are, we need to work in cooperation with a clear understanding of what we should and what we should not do. And right now, I'm not clear on what the county wants us to do. And I think that our responsibility from the state legislature is saying, we don't move until that we have approval from them in any part of, of, uh, design, construction, even though the roads connect, if it goes through the county, we have to, we have to have clear agreements on that. And so that's, that's, that's kinda where, in the USAC meeting, that they, they said very clearly, we're not participating financially.
One commissioner?
Well, that's all there is on that committee. Tim Chestnut. He's the chair of the, of the county commissioners.
Counselor Gabriel, yeah, please.
So I'm just saying that maybe the other two commissioners, are they aware of this? Is the county engineer aware of this?
We don't know.
He was, he was there.
Was Bill, was there, okay.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm just bringing up the idea that maybe we should get everybody together before we assume things.
I agree.
Okay, good.
Counselor Hanson?
I think my question has been answered, but we seem to be talking in tongues here. And I want to be sure that the county commissioners have not had this item on their agenda, they have not voted on this, correct?
To the best of our knowledge, no.
I know it's hard to say that they, but let me rephrase the question. Have the county commissioners had this on their agenda and have they voted on this?
City manager?
Um, Mayor and Council, the county commissioners appoint, uh, county staff and a county commissioner to the USAC committee. How those appointees from the county commission and from county staff report back to the county commissioners, I cannot speak to. But they, you know, they are members of USAC along with the University of Wyoming, City of Laramie, and the county. Um, I, I would assume that those folks report back to their entity the way you guys report to each other and we report to you, but I, I can't say for certain. And I'm trying to look right now to see if there's been anything on the agenda, but I'm probably not gonna finish that search in the next two minutes, but I'm trying. So, so I don't know, but certainly they have official appointees to the committee that they have appointed and I assume empowered to vote on the behalf of the county, so, yeah.
I s- you may, I see your point. For my taste, until that is clarified, I don't even wanna vote on this thing one way or the other because I think Counselor Shumway has a very good point and so do you, Mayor. We are stepping on toes here, which we're not supposed to be stepping on anymore with House Bill forty-three. Oh, forty, whatever it is.
Fourteen.
Fourteen, whatever it is. Damn House Bill. But I don't, I don't think that's a question for us to decide if they have not come forward formally to say, we are okay with this.
And I'll add, city manager, I review their agenda every week when it comes into my inbox and I not seen it on their agenda to the best of my knowledge.
Um, Mayor, I would concur with that. I also review the agenda. I don't recall anything recently, but I don't know how their appointee reports back to them or if they have empowered their appointee, in this case, Tim Chestnut, to vote on their behalf. So, yeah, but I don't recall anything either, but I was trying to double check.
All right, Counselor Shumway, then Counselor Polikas.
Just to the question you have, I brought this up with another ca- uh, commissioner and asked what we should be doing, and they said, I've not heard of this. So my guess is it's not being a, a topic of discussion at this point.
Okay. Counselor Polikas?
Well, I'd say two things. And I understand what you guys, what, what everybody's saying. First off, I don't wanna jeopardize one year's of delay. Secondly, we have two bodies, they both have to vote on it. Somebody's gotta be first. Let's, let's not delay this on a matter of principles. It's either, it's either gonna be, they will be in full support of the project. The question is whether they're gonna support it financially or not. Okay, if you're looking for financial support, I rather doubt it's gonna happen. If you're looking for support of the project as being a priority, they have representatives on that board, it's up to those, those representatives to report back to the commissioners, and I'm sure the commi- commit, we're not stepping on any toes, we're just moving forward on it. And it would be my hope that we convey to the commissioners that this is what we've, this is what we've moved forward on and that we, we would like your concurrence on it. But I don't wanna lose a year's worth of time on principle, on something we think might be stepping on somebody's toes. I just don't wanna lose a year.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I agree with Counselor Polikas and Counselor Schuster. My question is, if it starts in the city and ends in the city, how much is actually in the county? And my second question is basically going to what Counselor Shumway said when he first, when we first started this conversation, is if it's a little amount.
It's about a third.
A space or?
It's about a third.
What about annexation or asking for right-of-way approval or something other than part of this cooperative agreement piece? I mean, do we have other options? I guess might be my question.
I am not sure on what length of it is in the county unless Earl knows.
We're, we're looking.
Okay, um, what I would state again is, um, you know, council, if you, if the urgency is to get the project off the ground.
Right.
And you want to vote for this agreement tonight, what you'll really be doing is you will be committing the city to the full local share of 1.9 million. It would keep us on schedule, but you would be incurring that full responsibility and presumably without consent of your commissioners if you think that's important. And if you think that the vote they cast at USAC is insufficient, right? I leave that all to you. But as far as just the logistics, the way I see this, and Bob can correct me if I'm wrong, if you did pass this tonight, you would incur that liability. The risk you run is if you, if you do want us then to subsequently go approach the county for some kind of resolution of support and/or a cost-sharing agreement, if they came back and said, no, we don't support it, you can't go outside of the city, I'm not sure what we would do, but you could subsequently negotiate that agreement. And if you're correct that they're, they're in support of it, they spoke at USAC, they seem to be supportive, I don't see why we couldn't negotiate a second agreement for cost-sharing. So I apologize for not giving you, um, maybe the, the ideal solution, but I just want you to understand what you would be committing to tonight, worst-case scenario. And we would be happy to talk to them about cost-sharing through a subsequent agreement if you want to pass this, or you could delay it, we could talk to them for a couple of weeks and come back in two weeks. And maybe two weeks would not cost us a year. That's what's up. Oh, three weeks, right, we're on a weird two-month cycle.
We're three weeks.
We're three weeks out from the next meeting.
That's Tuesday.
Thank you.
So, um, for council, you know, for discussion and for time purposes, if there's enough people that are supportive of a postponement, maybe with some direction to not only, uh, talk to the commissioners about cost share and approval, but also to talk about, talk to YDOT to see if they are amenable to a surveying-only agreement? Maybe that would be a way to go forward. Counselor Stoner?
Thanks, Mayor. I would just say that it seems like there's a possibility that maybe we can avoid delaying it by a year, but have everyone feel more comfortable. And I think that we should take that avenue before we either say yes or no and ISO move to delay or postpone this item, um, until?
The next business meeting?
The next regular business meeting.
June, June 5th.
June 5th, um, and should I add, tack on the conditions to it? Um, and request that staff investigate a potential cost-sharing agreement with the county and what else?
Check with the state.
Different feeling?
Sur- a survey-only option from YDOT?
Survey-only option from YDOT.
Cost-share approval from the county and surveying.
And approval from the county.
That's second tip.
Okay, we have a motion, a second by Counselor Gabriel.
Can I clarify?
Counselor Hanson?
Also include approval of this stretch by the county?
Yes. Yeah, it includes all three. Is there any public comment on this postponement motion?
Mayor?
Speak, ma'am.
Can we repeat that motion again? Because it was kind of added on by a lot of people, let's make sure we actually, we have that right.
Sure, what I, what I have here is a motion to postpone to June, uh, June 5th, 2018. And in the meantime, request staff to contact the county, uh, for, to negotiate a cost-share agreement, to obtain approval from the county for operating in the county for the project, and also to approach YDOT about a survey-only agreement.
I think that's it.
Yep, okay. All right, no public comments on this? Is there any discussion from councils? Counselor McKinney?
Is the piece of property that's in the county, is it privately owned or does the county own that property?
Privately.
If it's private, why can't we pass it, go to the landowner and have it annexed in?
Two-thirds and it takes months.
Counselor McKinney, I think that's a great question, but we're, we have to speak to the postponement right now.
Sorry. Sorry.
Okay, is there any other discussion on the postponement from council?
We just need to ease it.
Tell the.
City clerk, can you do roll call on the postponement motion, please?
Gabriel?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Polikas?
No.
Shumway?
Yes.
Schuster?
No.
Stoner?
Yes.
Pierce?
No.
Somerville?
Yes.
That is six yeses and three noes, Your Honor.
Thank you, that motion carries, it is postponed till June 5th. Moving to the next item, item number 14, Counselor Schuster.
Thank you. Title of this is J. and R. Laramie Industrial Park Preliminary Plot. I move to approve J. and R. Laramie Industrial Park Preliminary Plot based on findings of facts, conclusions of law, and subject to all planning commission's recommendations.
Second. Second by the vice mayor? Mr. Connor?
Thank you. Uh, Mayor and Council, as stated in your cover sheet, this preliminary plot is located within unincorporated Albany County, um, but it does lie within the current extraterritorial jurisdiction, um, and because that is still in place until the beginning of next year, this preliminary plot does need to go through the city and the county's plating process. So I'll give you a brief rundown of the project. Currently, it is a developed site, um, on one parcel of land, they plan on subdividing that into two lots, one with the current development and one that could be developed in the future. The, the future land use designation for the property within our land use plan is public and institutional. The current use, um, doesn't match this, uh, but since the land use really isn't changing, they're not planning on rezoning it. And the fact that it's just outside city limits, staff doesn't have any issues with this, um, lack of conformance with the future land use plan. When that newly created lot is potentially developed, it will need to meet all standards for Albany County, including all drainage and access. There are no water or sewer services proposed, nor will there be any water or sewer service while this is still in the county. Land is being dedicated on the north side of the site for any potential access in the future, so both lots, um, once subdivided, some, once subdivided, would have proper potential for access. And any sort of access onto the highway system would require YDOT approval if that ever happens. So again, major points for your consideration is that it is within the extraterritorial jurisdiction approximately a mile north of town. It will not be getting any sort of city services, um, and staff does recommend approval with conditions. Those conditions being, YDOT approval will be needed if they decide to access the highway system. I'm happy to answer any questions, as well as the applicant's engineer is here.
Questions? Counselor Shumway?
Well, here we are again. How do we know that the county's gonna approve conditions? We're, we're making decisions for the county, and that's not something that we have been given the right to do. This, this, you know, the, uh, I, I think, you know, our frustration with House Bill 14 is coming now before us.
Of course.
And what do we do? Do we just continue to do business as usual? When we've, when we've done this before, it has caused heartburn with the county. I don't wanna do that anymore. I wanna cooperate with the county and do what the legislature has given us the right to do. And if you say there's conditions that we place on this for YDOT and for the county and for the city, how do we know that that's gonna be approved or acceptable or amenable to the county? I, I just, I don't know how I can vote in, in a positive way on this until we, uh, resolve the, the ability that we have to work in cooperation with the county.
Mayor and Counselor Shumway, um, by all means, feel free to remove the condition. YDOT approval will be required by YDOT in order for them to connect onto highway. It's really just there to make sure it actually happens. The comments have been forwarded on to the applicant's engineer and can be forwarded on to the county planner as well. So whether the condition is there or not, it will end up being done. YDOT is not going to allow someone to attach onto the highway system without their approval. So, um, feel free to strike it, it's going to happen anyway.
Other questions? So I have two for you. So this is directly south of where we're putting the new Public Works Center. It joins to the city's land, right?
That is correct.
Okay, so is the sewer system, so the, the leach field and whatever, is it shared between, is it the same property for the city property and for this property?
Mayor and council, to my knowledge, it would not be because they're on separate parcels of land, but I don't know, and I don't believe, since our Public Works Director has left, he would probably be the one most knowledgeable about that.
Okay, um, my second question is, is about the water system. Is it, or is this one of the subly seas that was receiving water from the wells that are on the city's land?
Uh, Mayor and Council, I, I do not know, potentially the applicant's engineer does, potentially one of our other staff members does.
I can drive, drive towards the question. The reason I wanna know these two things is, so we're building the Public Works Center, I assume, you know, there's intention to run city water, sewer, city services out there in the future. So if we are providing sewer or water services off of our land, as was common with the adjoining properties to the old Wild Tech property, do we have an agreement in place if they're gonna develop this to come on city services or to shut that down? So as the less, you know, the, I'm speaking as the property owner now that's north of this. Are we gonna be required to continue to maintain sewer and water services if we provide city services to our own property and shut 'em down? City manager? Or city attorney?
I can.
Go for it.
Mayor, I can answer part of that. I don't know if, if these people have been, uh, or this property has been served by the water and sewer systems such as they are at the Public Works Service Center. What I say is, such as they are, because the sewer is the lagoon.
Right, right.
And I'm, I'm quite, I'm pretty sure that these folks are not served by that water, I don't know. But let me say this, we have agreements in place with the adjoining landowners, um, that as many ways as I could say it, uh, tell them we don't guarantee anything. We will, we, we've promised to maintain the status quo as long as we can until something goes wrong.
As long as we're using it.
They're required to find their own water and their own sewer.
So if we just, if we run the water out there and they don't wanna connect to it or, or the sewer, and, and we shut ours down and they were connected to our taps, then we're, we're out. The property owner, we're not responsible for maintaining those services.
That's what our agreement say. Now, we've made no promises about future city services. We have said, and we said it in more legalese, but there's this jerry-rig system out there, you can continue, uh, using it until it breaks. We may or may not fix it.
So I guess I, I want some clarification on that. If we go to city services, if that system's not broken, do we have to continue to maintain it? We can shut it down and cut them off from services. Okay, thank you. That's what I was, that was what I was going for.
We'll give them a notice if we're gonna cut, 'cause we need, like, water. If somebody's using our water, say we give you some notice so you can drill a well and find your own water.
Right, but we could discontinue services. That was my question. If they're gonna develop this area and put more straight on the system, would we be responsible?
What I don't know, and I can, I'm not sure any of us, is if these landowners are signatories to that agreement.
Part of the agreement.
Sure not on the sewer, but I don't, and I'm.
Okay.
Pretty sure not on the water, but I don't, I don't know that.
Okay, thank you. Any other, Counselor Hanson?
Would it be appropriate, under the circumstances, to change the motion?
Would it be appropriate, under the circumstances, to change the motion to approve, subject to concurrence by the county government, Laramie Industrial Park, et cetera? That way, you know, we are following the law again, and I, I see Counselor Shumway's point here. You know, we are talking about something that's, well, until the first of January is still our authority, but, I mean, it leads to more contention than necessary.
So, Mr. Connor, city manager, do you want to answer that question about changing the motion or?
Subject to concurrence by the.
Who would like the hot potato?
Mayor and council, Member Hanson, my recommendation is you keep the motion as it's stated in the cover sheet. Your job is to approve or not. The county will have that same requirement when the preliminary plot goes to them, to approve it or not approve it. You don't need to tell them that they need to concur or not concur. That's not what we're doing here. This isn't a comprehensive plan. The statute states approval by both bodies, not concurrence, so we're talking two different things, so to be clear, keep your motion as is. If you wish to approve it, if you don't wish to approve it, amend your motion accordingly, so.
Thank you. Vice mayor?
So, I have a question mostly for you. If the developer's engineer is here, is that correct?
Mr. Erickson.
And, and this is okay with your developer, all the stuff that we're talking about, all the design, the preliminary plot and everything, we're, we're good with him?
Yes, do you want me to come speak or?
Yeah, after, after we're done with questions with the, the city staff, then we'll invite the applicant up.
Then I'll wait.
Okay. Are any other questions for Mr. Connor? Counselor Schuster.
Question as a statement, there's one item on there, one.
Right.
State, state of Wyoming has to approve the exit off the highway. Whether we approve this or not, they've got to do it. I, I, I can't see what all this is about.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Connor. Invite the applicant's representative to come up. Welcome. If you can introduce yourself for the record.
Thank you, counselors. My name's John Erickson. I work for Gertz Baker Engineering and Design. This is simply a lot split. There's a tract of land, the old Wyoming Beverage Track, a mile and, slightly less than a mile outside of the city limits north. There's an existing structure there. The owners simply want to split the existing tract into, into two tracks. There's an existing permitted well out there. There's an existing permitted septic system. At this point, they have no intention of further development of the track. They just want to have two lots. About where I'm going now. What was the question?
That's fine. You've answered it.
Okay.
Any other questions for the applicant's representative? Thank you, Mr. Erickson.
You might have him sign in.
Oh, Mr. Erickson, I apologize. Can you sign in on the sheet there where it says media? Thank you. Is there any public comment on this item? Any discussion by council on this item? Counselor Shumway.
Well, House Bill eighty-five took away all of our rights outside one mile. We still have a mile, but this exceeds the one mile, so House Bill fourteen does not apply. We don't have any right to do any planning or anything outside a mile.
It's less than one mile.
It's less than a mile. Thank goodness.
Oh, yeah.
All right.
We're like three quarter.
Okay, all right.
Point nine.
Point nine nine five. We're good.
All right. Any other discussion by council on this item?
I just.
Counselor Polikas.
Just have, as Counselor Hanson would say, one observation. Our job on these plots and always has been to, to, to make sure that the roads line up, to make sure that the drainage is correct for future expansion of the city. This is exactly why we're in where we're at, because we, we just wander off into other discussions that are very important discussions, but it's not part of our job to approve this preliminary plot. This is a preliminary plot. They're asking us to approve it to make sure the streets line up. There's going to be no problem with annexation in the future, period. We've drifted from that job.
Any other discussion by council on this item?
They made us do that.
City clerk, can you do roll call, please?
Polikas.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Stoner.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero noes, your honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. Onto item number fifteen, Counselor Schuster.
Thank you. The title of this is reconsider the approval of Resolution two thousand eighteen dash seventeen authorizing eleven thousand six hundred sixty-six dollars cost share with the Laramie Regional Airport to aid in the cost of upgrading the internet services to a professional airpark research center, cowboy aviation, and the terminal and administrative buildings. Going to option two, I move to reject the previously approved Resolution two thousand eighteen dash seventeen authorizing eleven thousand six hundred sixty-six dollar cost share with the Laramie Regional Airport and to aid in the cost of upgrading the internet services to the professional airpark and research center and cowboy aviation.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor McKinney. I guess I will take the update from the airport board on this item. They have asked us to go ahead and dispose of this. They are currently working with the governor's office with their broadband task force on, on a project per se, and the, and the scope has possibly changed, and it looks like it may be a significantly different project than they had first envisioned, so this is no longer needed right now, and they will update us as the conversations with the governor's office goes forward.
It may come back, we.
It, it, something else could come back, but it won't be.
The same.
Yeah, it won't be the same, so. Is there any public comment on this item? Any council discussion questions? Okay, so a yes vote is a move to reject and dispose of the item. Just remind everybody, because the motion was to move to reject. So if you vote yes, you're disposing of it. Counselor, city clerk, roll call, please.
Schuster.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Polikas.
Yes.
Stoner.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero noes, your honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. That item is rejected. Onto item number sixteen, Counselor Hanson.
Thank you, your honor. I move that council approve original ordinance number nineteen eighty-two, original ordinance number nineteen eighty-two, amending title five of the Laramie Municipal Code, five point oh nine, point oh one oh. Definitions, five point oh nine, point three five zero. Malt beverage permits for special events, five point oh nine, point three five five. Catering permits for special events, five point oh nine, point eight oh oh. Point system for alcoholic beverage license violations and suspensions, and all this on second reading.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Stoner. City clerk?
Yes, your honor and council, this is your third second reading of this ordinance. Nothing has changed in the ordinance since the last reading that you had. Staff did meet with Roxy, and she may have comments that she'd like to share with you, I'm not sure, and then just a reminder that this ordinance, what it will do is, it's taking current policy and putting it into ordinance. It's not changing anything that we're currently doing, so just a reminder of that, and I'll take any other questions that have come up since the last reading.
We have any questions for the city clerk on this item right now? Okay, thank you. All right, so we'll go to comments from the public. Welcome.
Good evening. I, my name is Roxy Hensley, and I feel like we're old acquaintances as many times as I've been in front of you lately.
On a Tuesday night.
I'll keep it short and sweet. At the last, I, I believe it was a work session, I had, at the direction of Mr. Gabriel, I had asked that the council consider allowing my business apply for the special malt beverage permit for the, the caterings that we do at the University of Wyoming for football and for the basketball events during the entire year. I did meet with Ms. Johnson, as well as Mr. Sutherland, and we spoke to the Wyoming Liquor Division, the staff at the Wyoming Liquor Division, and we also brought in the University of Wyoming through Mr. Sparks in on our conversation on how we were going to be able to accommodate that per the language of the statute and the ordinance, and through those conversations, it's, it's my understanding, and I believe it's the understanding of Ms. Johnson and Mr. Sutherland, that council would be able to provide or allow me to apply for that special malt beverage permit for each, each building as a, as a different entity, so it falls within that definition of organization. So I, I just wanted to, I guess, maybe get assurances on that, or if there's questions on that. I know that Mr. Sparks is here to also talk on that issue, but I, I believe with the help of everyone, we've come to a resolution, and I, thank you. Do you have any questions for me?
We, we really shouldn't take questions during public comment.
Oh, okay. I didn't, usually you do, so, okay, thank you.
Mr. Sparks. Welcome.
Thank you, mayor, council members. I, I'm here, I guess, to comment on my support of, of the approach of using the malt beverage permit as the mechanism for Roxy at our events at the stadium and the arena. We actually, since we had, did not, were not aware until later this afternoon of the actions being taken and discussions being, being done, we had asked our legal office and risk management department at the university to also take a look at this as, as a backup, if needed to, to request that the university actually pursue the malt beverage permits in lieu, if the, if the other mechanisms and the other discussions did not work out. So we're in support of this, of this approach. We think, think it's the best approach, and also a much more encompassing approach for the entire year rather than catering permits for every single event in different locations. We think that's a much more efficient approach to this, and so if, it sounds like maybe that it's being worked out with Roxy with regard to taking that approach from her business, but I would speak in support of that, and like I said, we're, we're still in the preliminary. Our risk management and legal office are still looking at it. It'll probably take a week or so for us to get any kind of response back from that, from that particular action, but they are taking a look at it.
Thank you very much. Is there any other public comment on this item? Okay. Discussion by council on this item?
I have one question.
Counselor Polikas.
I have a question for our city attorney.
Okay, please.
With what's been suggested, from your perspective, from a legal perspective, do you see any issues with having the same person, another entity, taking out the malt beverage permit?
I've done this lockstep and with, with the clerk who's probably done more than I have, but we've checked with the liquor commission, and Roxy's holds a liquor license, so will need to set up a separate entity.
Right.
For, one for the stadium, one for the arena, and they'll need UW's permission. And then the liquor commission tells us they, they can apply, and there's things I don't understand. You have a wholesale permit somewhere that might make it easier, but it seems to be with the liquor commission.
That's all I was interested in knowing. Thank you.
Counselor Shumway?
I, I think I heard that one of the options is the university obtained the malt beverage permits, and if they do, they also assume liability, correct?
Boy, do lawyers hate to talk about liability and. That's what, that's, that's what they're, that's what they're analyzing. If, if Roxy's entities can take the liquor license or that permit themselves, then that's not an issue for UW.
Counselor Schuster?
The coolest thing on this, we're on second reading. Guess what? If there's any problems, we've got three weeks to work them.
Other, other discussion on this item?
When you want me to do this?
We can, Counselor Hanson?
This does not in any way impede what we are asked to pass tonight, right?
That's correct.
Vice mayor?
Okay, so I have a motion. Um, what's that?
An amendment?
I'm sorry, an amendment. Let's see. To amend the motion to include the following changes to the ordinance. Amend section five point zero nine, point eight zero zero H to read. One, twenty-five points in a twelve-month period shall receive a one thousand dollar fine and any costs for a hearing. Number two, fifty points in a twelve-month period shall receive a two thousand five hundred dollar fine and any costs for hearing. Number three, seventy-five points in a twelve-month, probably period, shall receive a five thousand dollar fine and have license suspended for not more than three days, and any costs for a hearing shall be paid to the city.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Stoner?
So, the reason I, I'm bringing this forward is I think, and you guys have all seen this now for two weeks now, we've had, you've had copies of this, and I, I haven't gotten any emails, so I don't really know how you feel on this, but this was through a discussion with our city clerk in terms of kind of raising the, the fines when an establishment gets into trouble related to our, our point system. So I think we need a little bit more of a hammer. Our city clerk tells me, and please correct me if I'm not remembering correctly, but the city has never in all its years ever entered into number three, right?
That is correct.
And in terms of the number two point in our history, we've only had that situation once.
At least two times, maybe three.
Two times, maybe three, and most of the activity that falls into the point area has been in, in point number one of this, so we're just upping that fine just a little bit to kind of hammer home, hammer home the importance of our point system and being in compliance with the law. So. And that's, that's basically.
That's the reason for motion, okay? All right. Uh, city attorney?
Mayor, let, let me apologize. I was not here at the last meeting, and I know, Counselor, that these ideas were batted around. I'm going to plead for a little bit more time on those two ideas, because I've not been able to satisfy myself that, one, those kinds of fines can be levied by the city, and it may, I'm not prejudging, but I'd, I'd like to be able to nail that down, and then, number two, this idea of charging the, or applicant, if they, if they lose in a, in an administrative hearing, I, I, I need to look more closely at that, and so I don't mean to derail good progress, but I would ask for that time.
And that's fine. My only comment is the language related to the hearing has been there forever, I think, so, so that is, is. So that is one issue that I suppose you're going to want to take a look at.
And I understand it has, but I haven't been here forever. I want to take my own look at that.
So maybe in terms of procedure, should I just?
If you want to withdraw the motion and the second agrees, then we can pull it and do it next meeting.
And will you have ample time?
Yes.
Two weeks or three?
Three. It'll be three weeks till the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Second agrees?
Mayor?
I apologize for not sending it your way as well.
Hold on.
Before the motion is withdrawn, I'd like to make a few gentle comments about it as to it, once the motion gets withdrawn, we're moving on.
Right.
But it's going to come back in three weeks.
It'll come back in three weeks.
I have some feelings about it.
Okay.
That may affect whether it comes back in three weeks or not. And maybe this is an appropriate time, maybe it's not. I mean, I can express them three weeks from now also.
I think that would probably be appropriate to talk about it when it's on the floor. If there are general comments, I'm fine with that, but.
Well, let me talk about the three-week delay.
Okay.
And going to third reading. This is, this may, we may have had it, frankly, I put it in the file because I didn't know what it was going to come back or not. But anyway, we may have had it, but the people this affects, you're going to go into third reading, and you're going to change fines to people that affect their business in a very significant way without any public hearing, without any comments from, you're basically blindsiding the public on this. And particularly in third reading, and frankly, you're blindsiding the council in a way because I would prefer to have a work session or something before I made an important decision like this that affects our businesses within our community. Thank you.
Counselor Gabriel.
Just out of curiosity, where did this originate if the city attorney didn't have anything to do with this?
Vice Mayor.
I was working with our city clerk. I mean, she is.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I just.
Council members can develop and bring amendments, right? Yeah.
All right, thank you.
And so to, just to add to Counselor Polikas' point, we always have the option of postponing it again on second reading, or if we do something on third reading, we can postpone passing it for public notice and drive our city clerk totally bonkers. Counselor Schumway.
When the original point system came forward, Counselor Hanson and I served on an ad hoc committee with several individuals, including the Wyoming Liquor Commission, bar owners, public that was interested in this, to come up with the penalties, the points. And I agree with what Counselor Polikas has said, you know, that this needs to be something to where there's an understanding. And right now, we're just moving forward with something that is significant where there hasn't been a lot of betting. And so I don't want to have to deal with it on third reading because third reading should just be after everything has been sorted out. So I don't know, I don't know, you know, if we can just say, I won't support it on third reading, or I don't want to support it now, or let's postpone it to a fourth second reading, or what we need to do. But at this point, I think it hasn't really passed the test, you know, where we have everyone that's involved with the ability to have input. So this is difficult right now for me to deal with, with this major of a change in the point system and the penalty system.
Counselor Hanson.
Thank you, Your Honor. To at least tell the public where to find it, it's an important thing. It's on page 32 of the long document, and there is, it's called penalties for the accumulation of points. And it's in the indented section, there are points one, two, three, four, and five, and we're changing, we would be changing one and two as far, no, three, I'm sorry, one, two, and three as far as I can tell. I think the public at least needs to know where to find this matter.
So before we get too far down this rabbit hole, the motion has been with, the amendment has been withdrawn.
Oh, it has been.
It's been withdrawn. I've accepted the withdrawal from Jane, from Counselor Stoner and Vice Mayor. So it's not on the table at the moment.
Fine.
So there's no, there's no motion to change the point system. We always have the option to postpone another second reading. We can do it again in two weeks.
Three weeks.
Or in three weeks. We can have second reading, go to third reading, and postpone that. And then there's also another option that we could consider in having this discussion is we're going to have some other discussions this summer related to the A-Team resolution. We have a work session. I've spoke with the city manager about putting together a group to work on that, to bring some solutions back to the table. And because this was something that was asked for by A-Team in their resolution, it might be appropriate to talk about it at that point. So I think there are some options here, and I'm not too worried.
City clerk is going to hand up for two minutes.
I understood. Thank you.
Okay, I'm waiting for her to finish.
So I'm not entirely too concerned about, you know, whether we're going to, I don't think we have any intention of passing something on the sly and not informing the public until after we've passed it. City clerk?
Yes, I was just going to say that I, and I am speaking also for the city attorney, assuming he is with me on this. We are both very happy to hold off on this kind of amendment and talk about the point system and the other things later and give us all ample time. And then also make sure that we are able to do a public hearing on this one, as it seems council is concerned on that. We will support council if you want to do that. We are fine bringing a different ordinance change back at a later time. So I just want to make sure that that was clear.
Thank you.
Am I correct, city attorney, in saying that?
Yeah, I'll add to that. I feel, you know, Counselor Pierce, that I stopped something in its tracks here. I don't mean to do that at all. But it strikes me that this changing point system penalties might play into a larger discussion about bars and alcohol that I know you're involved in.
It's coming.
Certainly, well, I'll just leave it at that. You get my point?
Okay.
Right. And so, can I?
Please.
So just to, so everybody knows, this is not intended to, you know, quickly try to slip something in, you know. And the other thing is, you all have to remember that this is our second or third time on the second reading of this, and we have been really occupied with many other aspects of this. So the reality of it is, we are now off the subject that we've spent hours, hours on, and we're now getting into other pieces of this rather long document. And I would, I just want to, and in terms of the public knowing or not knowing, I mean, how many weeks have we been at this? I mean, if they, if our restaurant bar owners in town would have read the depth of this, this has been out there for months now, right? Months. So I just want to be clear that it's not a, ooh, big surprise all of a sudden tonight. You all have had copies. We've been talking about other pieces of this for a very long time. So if I'm okay with this discussion, either tabling it completely and go ahead and move on to our third reading and being okay, but at some point, I would really like to address this, be it this summer or whenever. I think our, I think we need to review this. I mean, I think it's been ridiculously low in terms of these fines. And, you know, and I, you know, I've spent 20 years working in a bar. I like bars, but it's ridiculously low for what goes on in there. So I'll just say that.
Any other discussion from council on anything that's in this ordinance for second reading? Barring a motion for another postponement. Just want to make sure there's no other public comments on this. Okay. If it's to the ordinance, yes. Okay. City clerk, will you please do roll call on second reading?
Hanson.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Polikas.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Stoner.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Summer, oh, sorry, Schumway.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero noes, Your Honor.
Thank you. That motion moves on to third reading in three weeks. All right. Move on to item number 17. Vice Mayor.
Okay, I move to pass Resolution 2018-39 approving submission of an early bid to the Wyoming Association of Municipalities for Laramie to be the site of the 2020 convention in honor of the 150th anniversary. What did I say?
No, it's written as the 150th, but it's the 100th.
Oh, sorry. Hundredth anniversary of women's suffrage and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Stoner.
Wow, women getting the right to vote. Woo-hoo!
Okay, so the reason that I asked for this to be brought forward, a couple of reasons. So obviously, Laramie has a very big role to play in 2019 and 2020 for both the approval of women vote and the actual votes occurring 100 years ago in 2020. There is a year-long celebration that's being planned by the Governor's Committee on this. Laramie is obviously a big part of this. The reason that I wanted to bring this forward is if we, if council approves, I'd like to take it to the WAM board as an early, hey, we want to do this because this is really important. There has been a huge focus on trying to recruit more women into municipal government, and I think this is an excellent opportunity. It's been eight years, it will have been eight years since Laramie hosted the WAM convention. So we are more than eligible, and WAM has had a lack of applicants, we'll put it, the last few years. There was one applicant to host the convention this year, which was Sheridan. So I don't see any competition, and if we get it early and get it approved by the WAM board, then it would give everybody ample time to plan instead of doing it just nine months ahead of time. So I'm happy to take any questions or discuss. Counselor Schumway.
I want to point out that Louisa Gardner Swain actually did vote in 1868, 150 years ago. Women's suffrage, the national thing didn't happen.
It's only 100 years.
Yeah, 100 years. So we're way ahead of the curve.
We're way ahead of the curve.
Just fix that length gap.
Yeah, we'll talk about that. Counselor Gabriel.
Please be fixing that, too.
Counselor Gabriel.
I'm sorry, but I did not look at the resolution. I was just curious about financial commitment from the city of Laramie. Can you update us on what that might be?
Well, it really varies from convention to convention depending on what we do. City manager, could you talk a little bit about what we did in 2012?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. Off the top of my head, Mayor and council, I don't recall what our actual outlay of funds was. We could certainly pull that number. I know the council appropriated some funding, I want to say 30, $40,000. But one thing to keep in mind, there's a lot of staff time, I will be honest about that. There's a lot of staff time and council time that will go into planning for the convention. But, you know, we've got kind of a formula, and WAM provides a lot of staff assistance as well. The other thing I would mention is there typically are city funds pledged to support this, but oftentimes, enterprising council members go out and solicit donations from the business community who, at least in the past convention that I was involved in planning for, they were really eager to participate and assist. University was also a great partner. They allowed us to host the evening reception to kick off the conference in the Wildcat Suite. It was a huge, huge hit. And the flower fund paid for a drink for everybody, and it was a really great time. So we have a lot of potential partners that could help offset the cost to the city directly.
Counselor Gabriel.
And would one be the tourism board?
Tourism board, yeah.
Absolutely. They were one of our partners last time. Yep.
Thank you.
And we had local sponsors. If I remember, the largest single sponsor amount was about $1,000 or $2,000. I can't remember exactly. But then we had welcome boards, you know, saying, welcome to the reception sponsored by, and we listed all of them on there, the heavy sponsors that were there. The change that has occurred in the meantime, as far as I remember, as far as I know, is that WAM doesn't contribute as much as it used to, if I remember right. They said, you know, the local community has to really step up to do that. There wasn't that much of it.
And they limit who we can use as sponsors. They also limit who we can go after as sponsors.
Correct, yeah, yeah. So, but it was a huge success at the time. We did well.
Yeah, I think we hosted a great conference. And I think you're, I don't know, Counselor Hanson, about changes at WAM, maybe Andy does, but I think Counselor Schumway, you are correct. WAM does have some very large corporate sponsors that they utilize year to year that they consider they have kind of a proprietary right to, and then we kind of drum up local business sponsors.
We went only after local folks.
Yes, you did, yep.
Because we were not permitted to use their list of sponsors.
We don't get a call there.
The, to speak to kind of WAM's contribution, they've changed the thing, a lot of the ways that they handle the convention since it was here in Laramie last time. One of the biggest costs was printing materials and books. They don't do that. They do like NLC does. You get an app on your phone, and everything is in your phone. They've changed how they kind of run everything. There is money in the WAM budget for the convention. We are helping Sheridan, and we are, we did help, we are helping Pinedale from the WAM board for the convention in June. So there is a little bit of money, but I think it's changed enough.
Yeah, it has changed.
And I think, just to give council an idea, I think the last WAM convention, which was Cody? I think it was Cody. They had like three, was it?
Gillette.
Gillette, thank you, it was Gillette. I think they had like 350 attendees or so, you know, all told, if every council member and mayor came, that would be over 600 people, but we get a lot of staff that comes, managers, that kind of stuff. So it is, even from just trying to get a convention here, although we might have, we're going to have staff outlay of time, we might have some money, you know, $10,000 or $20,000 in it, that's 350 heads in beds for two or three nights, which is always a good thing and always a good boost.
It makes the city quite a bit of money.
It does, and sales tax, absolutely. City manager?
Mayor, do you know if WAM has set out the dates for the 2020 convention yet?
So they actually have not set the dates, and that is something they've changed as well. They've worked with the local community to let them kind of guide the dates.
Okay.
So that's why the Pinedale conference is so kind of off schedule from what we've done previously.
Well, that's the answer I'd hoped for because we have enough time ahead of us. If they were to prove it early, that if we could work on the dates, maybe we could coincide with something interesting happening in town. I think generally, folks like to travel to Laramie, and especially when they can tack on to some university event or something going on in the snowies or something, so.
Really, or?
Yeah, absolutely.
It's usually too early for football season.
Yes.
That's unfortunate.
Yes.
But there are other events. I think we timed it to theater, summer theater performances because they run during the summer and other such events that were close by.
It's actually also a good time of the, you know, given the track of cities that have bid. We're in Pinedale in June, you know, we were in Gillette last year, we'll be in Sheridan next year. So it hasn't been down in southeast Wyoming in quite some time, so I think it's a good time for a bid, too. So. Any other questions that I can answer? All right. No public, task for comments. City clerk, please do roll call, please.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Polikas.
Yes.
Schumway.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Stoner.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero noes.
Thank you, the motion carries. Thank you, everybody. I will take that to the WAM board in Pinedale. All right, next item, number 18, public comments on non-agenda items. Not here anymore. Okay. We will move on to item number 19, consideration of future council work session topics. Counselor Schuster.
On Resolution 2018-38, setting the right-of-way encroachment business permit fee schedule, I would like to put it at, we had a cancellation of alcohol related on June 12th. I would like to see if we could install it in June 12th, since this has been postponed till June 19th. So this would coincide, the week before it would be coming back to council. I think the timing on that would be great.
And to be.
I need a second.
Yeah, you do.
Second.
I figured we'd get one.
Third.
But to be specific, Counselor Schuster, we could obviously advertise the work session to give the businesses another opportunity if they wanted to come talk to us. But we could get an update from Main Street potentially on their thoughts and preview of the reworked, reworded ordinance, or, sorry, resolution from the city manager. Is that? Is that the goals of that work session?
Yes, basically, I want to let everybody know that there's a lot of places that are putting tables out front or something like that, and then they take them away, you know, at night and stuff like that. So I kind of want to make sure this is, they know what's going on, absolutely. If you put something out front to increase business sales, they need to talk to the city. But a flower pot, a bench, or something like that, that, no, they do not encroach money, but they still need to talk to the city.
Okay. I just want to be specific on what we expect from the city manager's office on the work session topic, so.
So let me just clarify, what you're asking for is a work session on business encroachments in the public right-of-way on June twelfth. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So we talked, Andy and I, a little bit on the break, because I wasn't quite sure why we were post, what the postponement demanded of staff. My understanding was you want to understand what commercial rents are in Laramie. So I've sent an email to Downtown Laramie, which tracked those numbers for downtown, and also to LCBA, which tracked them citywide, asked them to provide that data to us, and then we will just forward that on to you.
We'll review that then.
Right, and I'll probably just send that ahead of time if that's, you know, meaningful to your discussion of fees. Are there other things that you are expecting us to have for that work session?
I think that if we can have the reworded resolution available just for council to look at to make sure we're all on the same page.
Right. And my, my vision of rewording, which Andy and I talked about prior to this meeting, is when we said business to the engineers who don't like to use lots of words, business is business, right? But what I suggested is that after the word business, we insert in parentheses for profit to make it clear it's for-profit business activities. Is that kind of what we're thinking? Are we on the same page? Okay. Because to me, that's just really simple, but I didn't know if you guys wanted more than that, so.
And I imagine this to be on the twelfth to be just a very short update opportunity if there's anything else from Main Street of the businesses that they want to discuss. Vice Mayor?
Am I remembering that we thought about a public hearing that same night?
Thank you.
No, we, we talked about it, but I think this is taking place of the public hearing.
Okay.
Public hearing will be on a city council.
Right, so this is just a work session the week before. Okay. We all good? All right.
Can I?
Please.
Can I suggest you contact the Laramie Board of Realtors and see if they have some realtors that specialize in leases for commercial properties?
And please, go ahead. I mean, and can we also separate out like clothing, like, can we separate out jewelry, clothing, retail-type stores to restaurant, bar? I mean, or do we want an average? And the reason I say that is, I mean, are they going to have a sidewalks? Are they going to need a permit for a sidewalk sale? Or are we only talking about someone who actually spends, you know, twelve-plus weeks with actual tables and they're generating revenue and they're turning table after table after table and it's a restaurant or a bar?
I think that's the discussion for the work session.
Yeah, I would say sidewalk sales should be permitted by your ordinance. Now, again, we have not been enforcing this, we've been waiting for direction from council, but with your direction, we will enforce it. You've mentioned we have a lot of illegal encroachments. We've been just sort of allowing those and only really bringing them to the businesses' attention when they're causing some kind of hazard. But sidewalk sales would be an extension of your business activity and you'd be conducting it in the public right-of-way. So yes, that would meet the definition. Whether or not you want us to break down, and I have to say, you know, this isn't something that we do for a living, but I thought we'd rely on the professionals who do do this, like Main Street and LCBA and the Board of Realtors. If they can break that down, I would feel more confident giving that data directly to you versus city staff and engineers trying to massage it. It's just not, it's just not really our expertise, so.
The reason I, and I might be getting too deep into this, but a sidewalk sale is like once a summer, whereas the other side of it is like, it's there, you're sitting there in the rain, I mean, it's there day after day after day.
I think that the work session would give us an opportunity to make sure that we've massaged these out and that we've kind of vetted out the concerns. And we've given ample time for the businesses to bring any other concerns, so that when we have this back on the nineteenth, that we're all on the same page. We don't have to have another hour-long discussion on it.
So we do want to try to break those commercial rates out to sort of restaurant, food service versus retail, maybe? Or no?
If they have them?
Okay.
I don't know. Jane, what do you think? If it's a, I don't know, do they break it out that way?
I can ask the question, and we can see what happens.
Do they break out leasing rates generally by like restaurant versus clothing versus or is it just kind of an average?
I believe it's the space and the location of the terms.
I think the answer is ask.
Ask, okay.
Just ask if they have it, and we'll see, we'll deal with the data that they have.
Okay. Okay. Are there any other work session requests right now?
So, do we have the point system coming up? Is it in there?
Yes. It's in July.
It's in the camp. Yeah, thank you.
And we will move on to Counselor Hanson.
I'd be glad to. And without further ado, I move that council.
She came back to do public comment.
Sorry? She didn't. Just go, go, go.
Yes.
I'm holding off.
Ma'am, did you have public comment that you wanted to give the council tonight?
Alcohol, that's all I have.
Okay, so are you good? I can give you, I can give you five minutes.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name is Christy Love. I'm residing at 2800 East Garfield Street, B102, Laramie, Wyoming, 820082070. Okay, sorry. I come today, I came today to talk to you about how alcohol interferes with our thinking process, and it leads to a lot of serious problems. Alcohol does a lot of harm to the body, when you consume it. It is very dangerous, and it also leads to death. That's why I'm really, I'm really thinking, I don't know, excuse me, I'm thinking about what's going on at the university. I mean, the university, I was surprised that they would be, what do you call it? Selling alcohol, beer, excuse me, malt liquor, because that still damages the brain and the body. And it, I'm just surprised that an educational institution would be able to do that. I'm hoping one of these days that we don't do that anymore. And that's why I want to one day try to run for president so we can actually do things to clean up America, try to get the drugs out and stuff like that. But the alcohol permits will lead to the students saying it's okay to drink alcohol. And I hoped that you guys refuse it because of the health of people who do, who would go to the games. Alcohol, beer, wine, and liquor leads to wrongful things. May I ask the city to not approve the permit of alcohol to be introduced or actually be able to serve the students and the community because of the health, health issues that it will, sorry, will provide, which is not a good thing.